Okay, we're ready to get started. Today is Tuesday, October 28th. This is the City Council's work session. I'm calling this meeting to order, catching my breath, and saying that notice is hereby given to members of the City Council and to the public that at this work session, the City Council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public. Can I have a roll call?
Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember Aslan?
Present.
Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Spence? Here. Councilmember Spence, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your beloved and faithful citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just for all.
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by Native descendants, border mountains sacred to Indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. Next up is open call to the public, which enables the public to address us about any item that is not on the prepared agenda. And because whatever you may be sharing with us is not on the agenda, that we can't have back and forth, we can't ask questions, but we can direct staff to follow up with you. Jenny Niemann.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers of the public. My name is Jenny Niemann. I'm the Climate Action Section Director in the City Sustainability Office. I'm here today to let you all know that we are currently taking community feedback on the Carbon Neutrality Plan update. This follows our three open houses that we had in September and October, and now we have a virtual survey on our virtual engagement platform, which is Connect Flagstaff. As Council heard earlier this month, this update is to improve the plan, elevate adaptation and equity priorities, and reflect our progress, among other things. As we're updating this plan, we're seeking input from the community. We want to know from every resident, what concerns do you have about climate change? What are your priorities for action in your community? And what do you want climate action to look like when we take it in your neighborhood? And how do you want to help? I'd like to invite residents to complete our survey. It's available on the Connect Flagstaff platform, and it closes on Friday, November 14th. To fill out the survey, you can visit www.k connect dot flagstaffaz.gov. Alternatively, you can just Google Connect Flagstaff, and it'll be the first thing to show up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jenny. Next up, we have review of the draft agenda for the November 4th, 2025 City Council meeting. Council, have you all had a chance to look over the agenda? Do you have any questions or comments? All right, moving on to October work anniversaries.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Shannon Anderson, your Senior Deputy City Manager. Today, we'll start our October work anniversaries with our first year anniversaries. You'll see we have individuals from PROs, as well as Water Services, our Police Department, our Management Services Team, as well as our Library and Economic Vitality. So congratulations to those who have finished their first year with the city. For our five-year anniversary, the first one that you see here is Sean Armour. She is our IT Manager as part of our Information Technology Division. We also have Joseph Nagel. At the time we created this report, he was one of our Street Operations Tech Three. I'm happy to announce that Joseph has been promoted to one of our Public Works Supervisors. So congratulations to him on that accomplishment as well. The same is going to be true with our next five-year anniversary employee. His name is Keegan Slaton. He was also recently promoted to a supervisor. So congratulations to them both. Moving on to 10 years, this is Cory Mueller. He works at our Rio de Flag Reclamation Plant. He's one of our supervisors there, celebrating 10 years. We also have Robin. She is one of our Recreation Instructors as part of our PROs team. Moving on to 15 years, this is Anne Hopps. She works as a Lead Worker out at our landfill. So you may have seen her if you are there delivering some of your drop-off goods. So this is a 35-year anniversary. Her name is Martha. She's one of our Library Specialists. She's a valued member of that library team and provided exceptional service to the Coquenino County Jail inmates. There is admiration for her longstanding commitment to restorative justice for the jail inmates. She's dedicated as a public servant and continues to provide the best possible service. She knows what books and magazines everyone enjoys and works hard to make sure that the jail library collection reflects the ongoing needs of these inmates. Martha is friendly to all and has gained the respect of all of her colleagues. We've all enjoyed working with Martha. So congratulations to Martha on her 35th year anniversary, and that's the end of our work anniversaries for today. So a round of applause for all of our celebratories. And we'll be back in November. See you soon.
Thank you, Shannon. Next up, we have the City Manager Report.
Very short report, focused this time a little bit on law enforcement. We, many of you accompanied us at the staff level to the Exchange Club Ceremony at the Elks Lodge, I think that was about a week ago, and members of both Flagstaff Fire Department, specifically, oh, see if I can read this from here. Well, Flagstaff Fire Department had their firefighter of the year, first responder of the year, excuse me, and then we had the same recognition to our Police Department. With respect to the Police Department, if you can scroll down, oh, I should have this report in front of me. Okay. Engineer Paramedic, Justin Stasky, received the award of responder of the year for Flagstaff Fire. And then Officer Simmons with our Police Department also received recognition. Did I get that right? And we're just very happy for both of those individuals. It was a great ceremony. There were, of course, awards given to all the other districts and jurisdictions. I'm just focusing on the City of Flagstaff. A very nice event, and big props to those who received that very prestigious award. We also hosted a community dinner at the Market of Dreams last week. Thank you to those who attended there. And it was good. We had many students there partaking in a meal and some light conversation. Skipping around here, we also enjoyed a bit of a ribbon-cutting out at the airport on the new Grab and Go and Visitor Center. It's a combined venue out there, and that occurred this last week. Big milestone for the airport. We're thankful to all of those who were involved in that endeavor. It's good to see that up and running. There are two items in the report that may garner a little bit of discussion here. I'm not sure. We'll just see how it flows. But the first, and you're looking at it now, is the Communication and Civic Engagement Division, social outreach, social media outreach, and some updates on that. And I don't know if either Stacy or Georgiana want to speak to this, but we thought it would be of interest for Council to take a peek as to what's going on, how there's been tremendous growth and a very positive impact in our, with our internal efforts for social outreach, social media outreach. Any comments or questions on that? Otherwise, we'll just keep going. You can continue to scroll down. Thank you. Let's park it here for just a second. The Fair Item Update. Council, take particular focus on this, if you would. This comes up every now and then, usually in the context of what's on the calendar and when. So thank you to Stacy and her team for putting this together for you. This is actually a working calendar that they always have, but we thought we would include it in the report for your reading enjoyment here. You can see who on the Council has requested a fair item, what the topic is, where it is being assigned internally, and what is projected to be the date where it's coming back to the dais. And as you'll see, there is a good list, and it's forever evolving as these fair items come forward. But we thought this would also be of interest to you, and I'll stop there and see if there's any questions or comments on that.
Thank you. Yes, we have a comment from Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I spoke with our City Clerk on my fair item this morning to just do a check-in, and I would like to pull my fair item off the list. Staff has already put this matter on their radar, and they're looking on ways to beef up the language in the Bond and Commission Handbook. So with that, I would like to officially remove mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Like you said, we've got it on our radar, and we'll have it as part of some of the updates that'll be coming forward.
Thank you, Stacy. Mayor, Council, any other questions or comments? I know we have a very busy agenda today, so I'm kind of wheeling through this, and I think that will conclude my report, and we'll go on to other topics here. Thank you.
So for those of you to the side here, we don't allow signs in the chambers, so I'd ask you to put them away, put them outside. They would be... That is incorrect. And if you put them out there, we will hold on to them for you, but just please lower I've asked you to lower your signs. We are down to item number 1.8. I'm sorry? As long as she doesn't hold it up, I'm okay with that. Okay, so we're here tonight to consider the citizen's petition that was presented at our September 2nd meeting. At that meeting, the general consensus from the Council was that we wanted to discuss the petition and the Flock contract. We're going to hear from all who want to speak tonight. After a short presentation from staff, Council may ask clarifying questions when it comes to our discussion. There's no vote tonight, but Council will give direction regarding the contract. Some of the direction that we may give is to bring the contract renewal back to Council for approval, to give direction to staff to not renew the contract, or provide direction to staff to continue public outreach and come back for a later discussion. So I appreciate that there are strong perspectives on this topic, and to hear from everyone and make sure that each of you feels comfortable sharing your opinion with us. We're going to refrain from outward demonstrations of support or disagreement with public comments. That is something that I always require in these meetings, regardless of the topic. If I know it's going to be, if there are going to be different perspectives, it's really important to this Council that everyone feel comfortable sharing their perspective with Council, and that we all respect those perspectives. So we... Oh, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Sounds like we're ready to kick this thing off. I thought I would preface the conversation with a couple of comments about procedure. I think the, what is about to unfold in the Council chambers, we would largely see as a conversation on the merits of this topic, a conversation on the substance of this topic, and we're looking forward to that conversation. But there's been some suggestions raised along the way, and we've received a lot of feedback on this particular topic, suggestions to suggest that the procedure hasn't been followed as it should. And I wanted to address that and put those concerns hopefully to rest, and forgive me for backing up and speaking a little bit at a high level here, but I think it's appropriate, especially with the large audience. We operate under a Council manager form of government here pursuant to our City Charter, and that's pretty well laid out. And under that form of government, which is typical in municipalities, especially of this size, Council performs many functions, so does City Manager. And the City Manager is, even though it's referenced in the singular, is representative, really, of the entire organization. We have 1,000 employees here, spanning 14, soon-to-be 15 divisions, administrative divisions, in addition to our legal department and our court, municipal courts. Under that form of government, Council, and I'm overgeneralizing here, basically sits as the policymaker, and many, many very important policy discussions come to this dais, and Council weighs in on them. Don't need to give you examples, it's something that happens continuously. Also happening continuously is the administration of all the city business, and that's what we do. And we implement the Council policies, yes, but we also oversee the ongoing services and operations within the city, and all of that is embodied in our City Charter. If you think about the division between Council as policymaker and staff or administration as overseeing city services, administering the city business, it's convenient to think of it as two separate spheres that do not overlap, but that is not the case. The overlap is real, and it occurs in just about everything we talk about. And not only that, but there's also overlap with our legal analyses, which find their way now into just about any topic that comes before the dais. So in the coaching and refresher courses that we've done through the years now, you may recall, you know, the Venn diagram that we pull out where we show the overlapping functions of our city government between policy, administration, and legal. And those lines are blurry, and there is tremendous overlap. And today's topic is a good example of that. The suggestions that have been raised procedurally is that, well, this is a policy matter that should have been before Council. Countering that thought is, this is an administrative matter, governing the operations or delivery of services involving our public safety, and it's an administrative matter. I would suggest that the question is, has a wrong premise. It's predicated upon a wrong assumption. The reality is, we can have a debate all day as to what it is, policy, administration, and I think it doesn't serve the purpose. The reality is, it's an important topic. It's obviously an important topic to the community, and it's rightfully in front of Council for discussion, on the merits, on the substance. Now, it started here in the City of Flagstaff, I think over a year ago, thereabouts, when we initiated a contract with Flock for the use of these cameras. And then came the renewal of that. And that, the procurement of that, because the threshold of this, of the service that's being provided exceeds $100,000, and in accordance with our charter, if items exceed $100,000, they come to the Council dais, and this one did. It was as a consent item. Consent items typically don't garner a lot of discussion. They can, they can be pulled off the consent agenda. We saw that happen just last week. And there can be discussion, or they can just be approved, but they are on the agenda. They are noticed as such. Now, internally, we, at the staff level, as we prepare these Council agendas, always endeavor to try to advance items of important, of high community interest, or items that we think may ultimately be of high community interest. We advance those to the Council regardless of the procurement threshold. In fact, in front of me is an excerpt out of our procurement manual, and this language was actually something that came out of our office upstairs years ago, several years ago, when we made the decision, the leadership team of the organization, that, look, even if we have thresholds and we have things that might be clearly of a policy nature, yet that's a given, they go to Council. But what about the topics that don't meet those thresholds, or a little bit more murky or fuzzy in terms of whether they are policy-derived or administrative in nature? We think in those cases, they should go to Council, and we issued a directive to that effect, and the language in the procurement policy now reads specifically, procurements less than the formal threshold, as I just mentioned, $100,000, as described in the City Charter, are not required to be approved and awarded by the City Council. But the next sentence reads, "The City Manager deserves the authority to bring any contract resulting from an informal procurement to the City Council to obtain input in matters of high community interest or potential controversy, or in instances that the City Manager deems necessary." And that language mimics what we follow administratively, which is, and sorry for the long-winded explanation, but if we think it's of high community interest, it's coming your way, no matter what the amount is, or, you know, what the qualifications are, is coming to the Council dais. Now, this topic, when it first came about over a year ago, was not of the high community interest that we are now seeing. That is an obvious statement. Had we known at that time that the topic of Flock cameras and their usage by public safety would reach a level of interest that we are now seeing, not just in the City of Flagstaff, but in many communities nationwide, we would have called it out, and it would have not been a consent agenda item, but something for discussion, and probably a work session preceding the action item. It would have been, it would have garnered that level of attention. We didn't see it as a controversial issue a year ago. We certainly do now, but I just wanted to explain to Council how it is that this contract, which is now up for renewal, has evolved, and, but more importantly, how the topic and the amount of high community interest, the elevated interest in this topic, has also evolved. If you were to Google search all the communities that are wrestling with this issue right now, you'll find quite a few. You'll also find that there may be like 4,000 or 5,000 communities that are now using this service. But with the communities that are having discussions, like the one we're about to have tonight, it's all been very recent, like within the last two, three, or four months. If you go back a year ago, I don't think you're going to find that level of interest. It is not to suggest it was not a topic of any interest a year ago. It was, but not to this level. I think I'll end it with that and simply note, it is properly before you at this time. Of course, we have a citizens' initiative driving this, and we're all looking forward to the discussion that will follow. But it was, you know, it started out as not, as not such a controversial matter that would fill the Council chambers a year ago. This is all fairly recent. I think you can attribute that to a number of reasons. Maybe it's the number of Flock services that are happening. Maybe it's what we're seeing... Maybe it's the number of Flock services that are happening, maybe it's what we're seeing in the national landscape, in other areas, and the underlying concern by many, many people of data sharing. I don't know, I'm not an expert on it. I just know that things do evolve sometimes, and issues become bigger issues, and I think we're at that point tonight. So I welcome the discussion. I just wanted to start by making those comments, and I'll let it go at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And for people who may have never attended a city council meeting, we're going to take public comment after the presentation, and you have three minutes, and there's a clock here, and we'll need, looks like we already have a stack of cards, but we'll need one of these cards filled out by you, and they're located in the back of the room, and you can give them to Stacy right back here.
Ready? Good afternoon. I'm Sean Connolly, I'm your police chief. Mayor, council, city managers, and community. Thank you very much for being here today and continuing to be engaged collaborative partners in safety with a focus of the well-being of our community. We are a caring, compassionate, innovative, and progressive community that is forward-thinking. This as it relates to water, climate, housing, environment, and public safety. We are constantly in a position of embracing technology on all these fronts, challenging ourselves to be more thoughtful and be in a state of continual improvement. If we want to truly support victims of crime in this community, we need tools that work. But we also need your faith. Your faith that we will use this in the right and correct manner and in the Flagstaff way. So I'm asking you not to just trust us blindly as we have this conversation, but to hold us accountable, hold me accountable as your police chief. Walk with us, talk with us, challenge us, be a partner in ensuring this is right on behalf of those that need this service in our community. Our commitment is this, we will use this technology with transparency, accountability, respect of your rights. This is not a surveillance tool for tracking innocent people. They are targeted instruments to help us solve crimes, locate missing persons, and ensure that victims of crime are not forgotten and left behind. Technology enhancements have always and will always be part of our life. We have a responsibility to use these tools with humility, with care, and with full transparency. That's why we have strong safeguards in place here in Flagstaff. We do not use this technology to surveil people. We do not share data without cause. Every use is logged, audited, and accountable. It requires multi-factor authentication to access our data and our data alone. We only retain information for a limited time on behalf of victims. At the end of the day, this is your police department. This is your uniform, this is your authority. We receive all our moral authority from you. The trust that you give us is not given to us. It is earned every second of every day, it is being earned right now, at this very second, in this community. When we use technology with integrity, and when we center it on people and their dignity, it becomes more than just a tool, it becomes a lifeline for our most vulnerable. And let me be absolutely clear, we do have strict policies limiting how we use this tool. Every search is documented, every search is able to be audited. We do not keep data longer than we think is necessary for victims of crime. There is zero, zero tolerance for misuse. In the 12 months we've had the system, there has been zero misuses while over 270 victims have been serviced. But policies alone, written on paper, is not enough. It's earned through action, accountability, demonstration of purpose, and we have done this for the past 12 months on behalf of our most vulnerable. That's why we're embracing this community conversation, this dialogue, this oversight. We are aggressive listeners to our community, because this isn't just about what's legal, it's about what's right. I know the weight of history. I know that I have served communities who have suffered under unjust systems, and I've been an advocate for undoing those wrongs. I know the damage it does when people feel unsafe, when people are victimized and not protected. That's not the kind of policing that is in the DNA of the Flagstaff Police Department. I believe technology should never be a weapon used against community. I did not, nor did the members of this police department commit to this life of public service to violate Fourth Amendment rights or to infringe on personal privacy. Technology blended with humanness is what we commit to, in service of victims, while promoting and protecting civil and human rights, that is our goal. Technology should not be a tool, or should be a tool, that we use to serve the people at the highest levels possible, especially our most disenfranchised and our most vulnerable. So yes, hold us accountable, demand transparency. But I'm asking you to hear our side. Live through our daily experiences of supporting victims, which is unique. See how the technology, used ethically and narrowly and with precision policing, can be responsible, can be the lifeline for victims in need. It's not about watching you, it's about finding those victimizing our community and our most vulnerable. We owe that to them at a bare minimum, and we owe you our integrity. So with that, I'd like to have Deputy Chief of Patrol Colin C. come up. We've already done one presentation before you, this is a more narrowed presentation, bridging the gap from the last time we all convened, and he's going to walk you through this update. The old presentation is attached to this agenda, as is the policy, but I want to remind community, it's, this is the people's policy. We've created conduits for community conversation on all of our policy, and it's available forward-facing, public-facing on our website. You do not need a public records request to access our policy. So with that, I'd like to have Deputy Chief C. come up and talk to you a little bit. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief, and good evening, Mayor and Council, I've already been introduced. So I'll give our presentation on follow-up since we last met on September 2nd. First, our mission hasn't changed, it's to protect and preserve life, property, public order through elite service. A lot of us became police officers to serve and protect. You hear that in the people's why statements in the very beginning of their careers, and it is, it's true for me to this day and many other police officers that are in this room. But we're committed to leveraging the usage of modern technology to serve our community and victims of crime. That would include ALPR technology, or Automated License Plate Reader technology, and our product Flock Safety. But we're also very cognizant and respect the community's right to privacy, and since our September 2nd presentation, we've been listening to community nonstop, and this presentation will hopefully discuss some of the changes we've made since then. So, when asked by any media outlet in the city, you know, we've done as many on-camera interviews, radio interviews, in-person meetings, responses to media, responses to community members. We've lectured at Newman Arizona University to criminal justice classes and government studies classes. We proactively held a community town hall that was very productive at the Market of Dreams on October 16th. We've even offered to all elected members, you know, a Flock demonstration to actually see the program, see how the police officers use it, see how we apply our policy to the So since the meeting on the second we heard community, we want a Flock Transparency Portal, so we've been working, and we're still working, on perfecting our portal for what best suits the needs of City of Flagstaff. So on our portal, on our Transparency Portal, which we're working to get linked onto our city webpage, it'll say, you know, what are, what we do with the technology. So what the cameras detect, it searches plates in vehicles. It does not tell you how many people are inside of the vehicle, can't show anything about the person inside, no identifying information about who owns the vehicle or who's in it. It just shows a license plate and a vehicle to specific date and time in our community. So what's not detected is facial recognition, people, gender, or race. So this technology takes the concept or allegation of profiling out of policing. Like if the Flock, if the officer gets a hit that it's a stolen vehicle, it's just showing that the vehicle is stolen and the plate is stolen. There's no opportunity for the officer to see who's driving it or make, you know, a type of judgment against the vehicle based on who's driving it. So some prohibited uses would be immigration enforcement, you know, civil traffic enforcement for any personal use or for discrimination. And let me tell you, if it was used for personal use, because there's been stories in America, very few, but there have been stories, if some of our employees misused our Flock Safety System for personal gain, to track a girlfriend or boyfriend, I could promise you there would be severe discipline to include termination and potential criminal charging against the officer. And we do audit our data on a very regular basis. We can see trends on how people are searching the system, we could see if somebody's searching a specific plate a certain amount of times, and we look at that on a monthly basis, or even more frequent basis, to see, to make sure our searches are legitimate and have a legitimate law enforcement purpose every time we use it. So hot list entries, so what that is, and I'll explain in another slide, is that if we believe a vehicle is involved in a crime, we can enter that vehicle into a hot list. So if a vehicle is known to be involved in burglaries, for whatever facts that we gathered, we can enter that in the hot list, and then our officers would be alerted if that vehicle enters our community. Those hot lists have to be approved by the supervisor. So the officer has to gather the facts, and then put the facts into a police report, and then go get supervisor approval to make sure that the hot list is legitimate. And then we, on a monthly basis, audit all hot list entries to ensure that they were legitimate and for no misuse. And we've had this product for a year, and we haven't had any documented misuses of the product, and I think that's very important, because I trust every police officer that serves this community with my whole heart. I trust them every single day. Currently, we have a 30-day retention period, and we'll go over this also in another slide, but we've heard community. And we're open to having discussions on what the appropriate retention period is for the police department, and also to meet the community needs. On our Transparency Portal, it's interesting information, there's over 400,000 unique vehicle scans in our community every month. That's very good, Flagstaff is a great place to be. We only have 70-some thousand residents, 78,000 residents, but there's 411,000 people coming and going through our community in a 30-day period. Nearly 100,000 unique scans per day. Our officers in a 30-day period will do 450 searches for vehicles on a monthly period. To talk about some of the data in Flagstaff, our dispatch center will take 77,000 calls for service a year and send that out to our police officers. We know every year we're going to have 300 to 325 Part I violent crime victims in our community. So that includes homicide, sexual assault, aggravated assault, and other crimes. We know we're going to have 2,000 Part I felony property victims of crime. So every year, we know we're going to have 2,000 felony victims of crime. Our analysts were able to show we're going to have 8,000 misdemeanor victims of crime. So of those 77,000 calls for service, our officers are going to be requested to serve 8,000 victims of crime, or sorry, 10,000 victims of crime. The IACP, I said in my last presentation, but seven out of 10 crimes occur in a vehicle. So of those 10,000 victims of crime, seven out of 10 of those are going to be involving a vehicle, which is why this technology is so important to our police officers, to best serve our victims, because everything we do is for the victim. And this is our Transparency Portal. We're currently working to get our policy hyperlinked on the top of the portal. I've got Mike here with Flock Safety, who was actually helping me earlier today. But it's kind of, it discusses some of the things that I just said. We have 32 active LPR cameras and four Flex cameras in the community. Here are the agencies that we share with. It's all Arizona agencies. And this is kind of a regurgitation of some of the data I just talked about. So we have 2,000 hot list alerts that come into our community with our LPR system every month. So what that means, that could be a stolen vehicle, a missing person, a stolen license plate, registered sexual offender, someone wanted in terrorist activity, and other things that law enforcement nationwide has the ability to enter the plate, and if they have probable cause, they believe that vehicle is involved in that crime. So typically, if somebody has a very serious warrant for their arrest, potentially, you know, one of those Part I crimes I talked about, their license plate could get entered into the National Crime Information Center database, and then we would get a Flock alert if that vehicle came into our community. So potentially, these are very dangerous people that could be coming through our community just in that sheer data of 400,000 vehicles in a 30-day period. So to kind of give you an example of how an officer would use this system on patrol, say we had a hit-and-run accident at Fourth Street and Route 66 at 3:04, or, let's give it, say like 5:00 PM when the sun's going down, going westbound. It's pretty common for rear-end accidents to happen when the sun is setting, going westbound on 66 and on Butler. So say we have a rear-end accident, and the victim calls police, and the vehicle flees the scene in a green Toyota, and leaves the scene, and say you're the registered owner of the vehicle, you're the victim, and you only have liability insurance on the car. You call police, you know, I show up as the police officer, I take your information, I complete your state collision form, I give you your police report that you're going to need for insurance, but if you only have liability-only insurance, that's not really going to do you much good on recovering the damages to your car. Now, you provide to me that the vehicle was a green Toyota that left westbound on Route 66. So what I could do is I could enter the plate or enter a vehicle description in the Flock, and I could see if I could find a green Toyota vehicle that left westbound on Route 66 at Fourth Street. If I'm able to locate that vehicle or find a vehicle, then I can search the plate in a separate system that's available to all law enforcement in Arizona, or in America, and that's that NCIC database that I talked about. I could then access the person's identity, I could access the vehicle's information and registration and the owner of that car, and then I'd go attempt to make follow-up. Now, can I prove that that person was the driver and make an arrest? I can't necessarily, I have to do a lot more follow-up. I could prove that that was the vehicle, and I could potentially get the insurance to that vehicle, so I can give our victim the insurance, so you can recover the damages to your car, but I, doing some follow-up investigation, I could potentially make an arrest. Now, say I can't locate the person who owns that vehicle, I could call my supervisor, so in my case, I'd call Chief Connolly, and I'd say, hey, Chief, I'd like to put this vehicle as a hot list, it was involved in this collision, and it was also involved in another collision on the west side of town. If it comes back into the community, can I put it in as a hot list for 30 days so I can be alerted, so I can try to find this for the victim? If Chief says yes, then I could put it into the system. Then, that hot list that I created is going to be audited on a monthly basis by our professional standards office, and professional standards, that is Internal Affairs, and they're going to look and make sure that that entry and that reason for it is all legitimate, and if it's not, I could be held accountable. Hopefully, you know, I'm able to bring justice for that victim at the end of the contact, and we've had countless examples. We were out on a ride-along last week, and there was two hit-and-run accidents, I think at about 5:00 PM, 4:30 or 5:00 PM, and, you know, that's where, you know, the vehicle has fled and left our victim without insurance information. So that's kind of a case, and this can be used on a variety of cases, but that's kind of what we deal with on the patrol level, so the blue uniforms, the men and women that serve the Flagstaff Police Department in patrol, majority of their stuff, their reports have to be typed by the end of the shift, they have to do their investigations by the end of their shift, so they are accessing a majority of the Flock data within their So I'd like to kick it over to CJ Perry, our CIO of IT, oh, there he is, hey CJ, for this slide.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. CJ Perry, your Chief Information Officer. My apologies for not being there in person, I am currently on vacation. I just stepped away right before we were supposed to get to dinner in order to be available to provide any context from a more technical perspective. So rather than strictly just following the points you see on the screen, I really wanted to focus primarily on the concerns that we've heard from the community and how they tie to technical controls and... and how they tie to technical controls and, and hopefully address some of those concerns. So one of the, uh, primary concerns we heard with the, there was no initial public discussion prior to implementing F- uh, Flock. See, Amanda Clifton kind of addressed a lot of that at the beginning. But one of the things that we're working on to address this concern is a comprehensive privacy policy. And this will really help us define our core values into policy in relation to this type of technology, not just Flock, but we have other similar technology on the horizon. Uh, for example, there's things like, um, smart cameras that help with multimodal transportation. If we got those cameras, uh, we could use them to give like buses or even bike or pedestrians priority at traffic signals. They could have, help with the analysis for bike and ped, uh, to help staff know where the greatest need is for future bike or ped paths. They even help during events like N A U graduation to clear out traffic dynamically and quickly. Uh, the functional technology is very similar to Flock, just used differently. Another example is we also use drones for like fire and flood mitigation analysis to help protect our community's homes. Again, similar technology, but different uses. So all of these types of technologies would follow under this, this broad overarching policy. You know, create an opportunity for public comment regardless of whether it reaches the purchasing threshold to come to council. Uh, for each technology, it would clearly show the public that, uh, what we store, what the purpose of the data is, who has access to the technology. But just as importantly, it would be clear on what data we don't store. So hopefully that would help address that initial concern. The second concern, uh, is we've heard just as in relation to Flock as a company, they have been in the news, you know, quite a bit and have some negative articles written about them. Now, I won't be able to address every single article with that additional context and research, but I followed up with Flock on quite a few. What I do find is that these articles generally fall into one of two categories. First, there's articles related to data sharing with federal agencies like ICE. This is a critical point. Uh, like the community, we were concerned to learn about this. But what we've seen is that when these, um, community concerns around ICE and other federal agencies became prominent, Flock did change its policies and canceled those contracts with those federal agencies. All of us, uh, the city of Flagstaff, Flock, we're all trying to navigate these new and valid concerns that exist today versus where we were a year ago. Uh, but more importantly, some of those articles highlight that it was actually the local agency's policy or automatic sharing without proper controls that allowed that sharing with some of those federal agencies. That's not necessarily Flock's, uh, fault. It was a local decision or in many cases, just a simple lack of internal controls and checking their own logs. So this brings the responsibility right back to where it belongs with us. Um, it's our policy and our in- internal controls that matter. Uh, since Flock has canceled those contracts, it's our understanding that direct sharing with those federal agencies isn't even possible today. The second category is Flock did appear to have some lax data controls in the past. And this is actually extremely common with newer technologies. As a company builds the technology, they also have to build the controls. Some controls are built preemptively, but many are built as a response to the scrutiny of their technology. What I can say is due to that scrutiny, Flock has built some of the most comprehensive and transparent controls I've seen in a company. I'm sure there's articles that show a time where the controls weren't strong. However, it's my observance that, uh, Flock has become a better company because of this. In both categories, Flock has made improvements. They, there's been concerns regarding, uh, sharing Flock data with federal agencies. In response, Flock canceled those contracts with those agencies. There have been concerns with transparency and data controls. In response, Flock has implemented incredibly robust controls in a transparency portal, uh, which you, you saw just a, just a second ago. So Flock has done their part to respond to community feedback. Now it's really up to us to do ours, ensuring that our policies and practices really match our community's core values. I do want to thank the community for continually bringing up these articles to our attention. It, it really has allowed us to provide additional scrutiny. And that in turn makes both us and I hope Flock to, uh, to be better. Uh, next concern, I mean, this, this leads to a sophisticated and vital question. Even if we don't share with federal agencies, what stops, uh, an agency we do share with from passing along? And this is where our local policy and the system's technical controls are paramount. Uh, first, the system allows for granular control. We don't just share all of our data with anyone. Any request for data must be approved by our staff, must include a reason for the request and can be limited to a specific time, date, or case. Uh, second, the system has a built, you know, that built in transparency portal that shows exactly which agencies we have sharing agreements with. Finally, every search and every share is logged in an extensive and unchangeable audit trail. This is how those other agencies you read about in the articles got caught. Uh, the logs showed that they were sharing with ICE. We see this auditing as a critical accountability feature. Um, our commitment to you is this, we will perform extra due diligence on any sharing requests to ensure it's legitimate and aligns with our core values. We're not those other communities we see in the news. Our values will guide our policy. If we see anything in practice that well, uh, violates these core values, the chief has already assured the community he would turn the thing off and cancel the contract. I mean, if you haven't already, we would invite council to come and get a hands on with the technology to understand and validate those controls. We also heard from the community on the issue of data retention. Uh, the idea of storing data on innocent people for a long period is a valid privacy concern. Flock has the lowest retention period of any provider we looked at, um, but they provide options for us to reduce it even lower. Um, in a direct response to this feedback, we have an option to reduce, uh, the data storage time. W T C just briefly mentioned that and I believe we're going to talk about that more shortly. Uh, but we want to be transparent about the trade offs though. A shorter retention period will be perfectly fine for day to day patrol functions, but it may create challenges for detectives working on long term, complex investigations. So should the community desire this, we could implement it, monitor the impact to our detectives and adjust only if absolutely necessary and with public input. Another concern, there was concern around data ownership or data integrity or even data deletion after retention periods have expired. We own the data. Flock does not own the data. The language I see in the contract matches most cloud providers. It's our data. We do have to grant them some level of access and management of the data just to have the data stored on their servers. This is pretty common and typical. Uh, from a privacy perspective, from everything I can see, they follow industry best practices. They build, uh, us a cloud tenant and give us sole administrative access to the tenant. That tenant is encrypted even from themselves. In order from, for a flock employee to access the tenant, they have to ask us to grant them permission on that tenant. Again, this is standard best practices we see across multiple cloud providers. Block has multiple cybersecurity credentials. They follow government, uh, best practices. I'm going to go, I'm going to throw out a couple acronyms, so just bear with me here. They adhere to NIST eight hundred dash fifty three, C G S and FedRAMP. These are all government based security best practice frameworks for cybersecurity. They adhere to SOC two type two, which is a private sector standard and requires a comprehensive third party audit to be compliant. Going through these audits and compliance processes requires a significant amount of work. They are validated that they have the internal controls and that they actually do everything that they say they do in their policies. These third party audits effectively do what we can't, validate behind the scenes their processes. The fact that they're compliant with so many different frameworks gives, gives me a lot more confidence. Uh, the final concern I heard is, uh, the fundamental concern about abuse. Um, and, uh, Deputy Chief C mentioned this, you know, what stops an officer from using this to track someone for, uh, personal reasons? It's the core question of trust. And our answer is built on those checks and balances. We have strong policies, but more than that, there's powerful auditing. As we have already mentioned, every single search in the system is logged. It's tied to an officer, a time and a required justification. There's no such thing as an anonymous or just casual search. Um, if an officer were to abuse a system, they would leave a clear and permanent digital trail. That officer would be found and they would be disciplined. Again, we want to go a step further than just asking you to trust us. We want counsel to come see the technology firsthand. You know, don't just trust us, verify. We're also actively discussing the creation of an, a citizen advisory group for this technology and in relation to our privacy policy that's upcoming. We'd be happy to invite community members to see the technology firsthand, to partner with us in reviewing the audit controls and to provide deck, the direct recommendations on our policies. We believe this partnership is the best way to ensure that the community feels comfortable and confident that the system is being used responsibly and ethically. Counsel, those are the main concerns I heard. I hope I captured them all. I don't know, um, that I've alleviated everyone's concerns, but at least I hope that I've demonstrated the work we've done to address them. I'm sure you're home, hear many concerns during public comment and possibly more that I have missed. Uh, we're so appreciative of, of community scrutiny that we've received so far. Uh, these concerns are legitimate and this, uh, this scrutiny has pushed us to be better. And I hope that we've demonstrated that we're better because of it. Thanks.
One moment, we have a question for C J.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. C J, um, I don't, I want you to get back to your vacation with your family as quickly as possible. So I thought I'd catch you while you're here. But I am, I have a question about the A I element in the Flock system. So when I think of A I, I think of whenever I put in things into a Google search and it comes back with all kinds of weird information, which makes me a little bit hesitant to think about A I in a Flock camera. Could you please, um, you know, walk me down the road? How to explain that to somebody who doesn't know a whole heck of a lot about A I and Flock cameras?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. So, um, the term A I currently is a broad term that is used in a lot of different, um, contexts. A probably more appropriate, uh, technical term, um, in relation to this is machine learning. Um, so when you think of A I and you think of it from the perspective of like, say, chat G P T, um, that uses what's called a large language model, which i- is mostly focused on text. You're trying to get text back, but A I is used in a, in a variety of instances. So for instance, for many people who have tried apps, uh, uh, my wife got into gardening recently and she, uh, downloaded an app that, um, can identify different types of flowers, different types of plants and, and then provide data back on, um, you know, what, what those, you know, or how to care for those, uh, plants and, and things like that. What that effectively does is someone took a picture of a thousand different flowers and tagged that as a particular, uh, type of flower. And then you, you put that into an algorithm that says anytime you see something like this and the more you put in, the better it gets. Please, uh, uh, you know, tag that as this type of flower. And then you, you know, consistently add more and more data to that to make it better and better at recognizing a particular type of flower in a lot of different instances. Um, but it just, it's just the same type of input over and over and over again. Effectively what Flock is doing is that concept, but with license plates and turning the license plate into text. So it, it has, you know, thousands and thousands and thousands of pictures of license plates. And there's a, you know, a string of text and then they validate, did the A I get it right on the string of text? Um, and every time it gets it wrong, it corrects it and that, uh, consistently leads into the algorithm getting slightly better and better and better. So it's unlike chat G P T and kind of the way that you've interacted with A I from that perspective. And it's really, um, honed in on, we are trying to see a picture of a, uh, of a license plate from all different states, different colored backgrounds, different colored text. You know, could have scratches on it, could be muddy, you know, all of those things. And how can we get the most accurate response from the A I system to say, I get that that is a, a license plate and that this is the text that's on that license plate. And it's only done by constantly feeding in license plate information to validate that it's a license plate and, and what the text is. It's not using like the broad internet like you would see with in relation to chat G P T. Did that answer your question, Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, thank you very much, C J, for bringing that down to a very, very weeds level for me. Um, because it does help to know that the A I is, is only focusing on the license plates themselves and how to make a clearer picture. The best way that the system, the A I and the computer can give us that clear image as opposed to, um, or I've had actually quite a few questions from community and other folks that were, that were thinking that possibly the A I was telling the police department what to do or how to do it or things of that nature. So I really appreciate, uh, the context.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you, C J. I don't see any additional questions.
Yeah, thanks, C J. And at the police department, we welcome input and oversight, uh, from our I T department. Just the same as we welcome input and oversight from the community through our, uh, citizens advisory team. I want to emphasize if, if this contract does move forward and we're allowed to continue this program, uh, we, we are going to hopefully have some of these programs in place at a six month check in. So you can hold us accountable to what we're saying, that we're going to do the stuff that's, that are in these slides. We're going to have a citizens advisory team that has met, uh, to discuss these issues to give community input on how we use this technology. Um, one thing on C J's slide here, I want to say, and I'll speak for chief. If we hear of misuse of our data, uh, for, for things that are out of our policy, we're going to shut it off. We will turn it off. I have the ability to go into the administrative portal and deactivate it today. So if we misuse it and we violate our community's trust, but I can tell you, uh, in the one year or over one year of use of this day, of this system, we haven't had incidents of misuse, but we've had several documentations of successes and services of victims that I provided last meeting on the second. So currently, uh, before the September second meeting, we changed our, we, we heard community. We, we heard national narrative. Uh, we changed our sharing to only Arizona agencies. So our partner agencies in Arizona, as we know, crime has no borders. Uh, but we also heard community and we wanted to limit the amount that we're sharing to just, just be, uh, within Arizona. And there's some states where that's actually legislation. That's, that's the rules in those states. One thing we did since the last council meeting, it actually happened last week after the town hall, is remove, re- removed Flagstaff Police Department from the national lookup. So what that did is if an officer searched a plate and maybe the victim or the suspect or the suspect's vehicle had left to another state, our, our staff would be able to see in the national lookup that that vehicle is now in Colorado or that vehicle is now in Massachusetts or it's out of the community. Reciprocal, the other community could also search and see potentially a plate that was in Flagstaff. So they are no longer able to do that because we did, we heard community. We took ourselves out of the national lookup. I trust every member of the Flagstaff Police Department to use the system appropriately, but I also hear people's right to privacy and the data sharing is very, uh, important to people. Uh, so we went ahead and we took ourselves out to see where we're at. In six months, we'll see how it worked. Did, did we potentially not service some victims or is the system working just fine without being in the national lookup? So we went ahead and did that. Just to reemphasize, we don't share our scans with federal police agencies, but requests can, requests can be made on a supervisor to supervisor basis for like serious crime. So routinely we'll get asked, you know, by surrounding agencies, uh, you know, potentially the FBI who's investigating a very dangerous crime north of us. And then potentially, you know, if, if there was a valid reason, say the crime was, you know, some type of assault or something violent, then we would, okay, yes, we'll go ahead and search it. We enter it into our audit log. So that's, that puts a fingerprint on that search on a case by case basis. So I've had some long conversations with community, several as we saw on the previous slide about our retention times. I think it's only fair that I had conversations with our staff. So where, like I told you before, most patrol cases, we're searching those within a day or two. Uh, we're, we're finding, you know, vehicle information using Flock Safety. When I talk to detectives, they have a more complex, uh, caseload that they get. Uh, oftentimes, you know, very private cases, uh, involving, you know, sexual assault, you know, child abuse, uh, Violent Crimes Against Women Act, uh, incidents. Sometimes those don't get reported right away. Sometimes those get reported to a friend and the friend convinces the victim to go to a counselor. And then the counselor can, connects the victim eventually to police. So sometimes, you know, it, a month has gone by, two months has gone by and now the crime is coming forward and maybe there is a vehicle. So we've had detectives where they weren't able to service a victim because, you know, sometimes a missing person case doesn't come in for two weeks. And so now they're two weeks behind the case and then they don't get the case assigned maybe for another three or four days. So that gives them a limited time. So I think there is a compromise period, you know, thirty days is the maximum retention period that Flock Safety offers. I know in doing research in A L P R products, there's some systems that have no retention. That, that it's in there as long as the system has been active. I think there is, uh, a day range that, that would be middle ground. And chief and I are willing to, to reach that middle ground after doing more research of our own data, talking with more of our detectives about crime. But it's really, that thirty days is really for our detective division because of the complexities of some of those crimes that, that come to them. So that's all I have for an updated presentation, but I will be here for the entire presentation with the chief. And we look forward to dialogue and, and questions as it, as it comes up.
Thank you. Counsel, any? Thank you. Counsel, any immediate questions? If not, I'm going to open it up for public comment and then we can ask additional questions afterwards. Councilmember Garcia.
I guess I'll just get started with this first question. Thank you for the presentation, Chief and Colin. But we were, you were talking about the data sharing with the 50 communities here in Arizona. And you were also mentioning that we were getting, taken off the national data list. Could you help paint a better picture of my understanding of, of how this works? So what, what I've heard a lot of concerns from the community about is with these 50 partners that we have, that they can just zoom into our system anytime they want, they can pick up license plate whenever they want, and they could kind of access it just like you could access it, but from another department away from our city. So, so that's kind of the first question. Is, is that possible? And then I could follow up from there.
Yeah, another agency, another police officer could enter the case number that they're looking up. So the legitimate law enforcement purpose and their name. And they can access the camera and look at potentially scans that occurred in Flagstaff. Now, it is etiquette amongst law enforcement that if we're going to do investigations in another community, that we're going to notify either the agency head, head-to-head, or from a supervisor to supervisor level before we start doing any type of investigation in another community. So when the officer does enter that data into the portal, that leaves a fingerprint on that, which is now auditable. So if we find that people have been in our system and, and, and running, you know, something illegitimately, you know, then we can have another issue with that agency, which is, you know, if it's misuse, like I said before, it could potentially be a criminal issue against potentially the officer if he was misused.
And I have one more to follow up with that one. So the other concern that, that we all have been hearing up here throughout countless emails that I'm really proud of the community for stepping up and giving to us. That way we have these type of questions and we can have this kind of conversation and dialogue. Is, once that information goes to those 50 communities now, is it theirs to disseminate at their will? Is there other opportunities for other agencies to grab it from their, from their system? Forgive the convoluted way of asking this question, but I don't understand it.
Yeah, and if we were going to use, say, another agency, Phoenix or Scottsdale was going to use a scan, you know, from a Flagstaff camera, that would have to be a certified scan from Flock Safety. I mean, if we were just taking rogue photos and then using those off, like say you use the snippet tool, as Officer Condon showed me, and you take that, that image and then you're disseminating that. I mean, that's not going to be held up in court as a valid law enforcement, you know, ALPR scan from Flock Safety. So the potential that someone could do that is there, but I mean, I think that would be crimes. I, I do trust the men and women of the Flagstaff Police Department. I also trust, trust all Arizona Post-certified police officers in this state. I've had the opportunity to work alongside many agencies and I trust them just as much as the, the officers that work right along here in our community.
Thank you for that, Colin. I, I want to assure you that from the limited time that I've been on council and the amount of that we have interacted together with the department, I also do trust you guys and I trust the police officers as well. But making sure that taking ourselves out of the national search isn't going to sort of circumvent some sort of backdoor use is the community's concern, obviously. Thank you for the, answering the question.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Chief. Appreciate the, the information and the time that we were able to, to spend together recently doing some more of this Q and A. Just kind of following up on Councilmember Garcia's question. I'm hoping that you can maybe just restate for me what it looks like if a, a partner organization, so one of the agencies that we share information with wants information from our system. Because where I'm getting a little lost in that is the understanding that we own our data. And so any access to the data from our system has to be accessed by our team or our department. If there's a partner agency that we're willing to share information with who enters information, is that entering a request for us to access that information for them? Or are they entering that request and immediately getting access to that?
They're able to immediately get access to the data. Now, the etiquette and the procedure, and I think police chiefs are butt heads. If, if other communities were taking enforcement or had a reason to believe something was going on in Flagstaff and involved their case, then what typically happens, almost always happens, is that law enforcement agency gets in touch with our investigators from our law enforcement agency and we collaborate. That's how it's, how it's worked. I, I haven't seen, you know, an, an agency from outside of the city, you know, to start taking enforcement or initiating contact with somebody in Flagstaff without notifying us first and getting us involved. But the sharing is that trust. Yes, it's our data, but I trust the other Arizona agencies to, to share our data with. Now, if there was ever an agency that violated that trust and was misusing it and we found that either through audit or through some, an incident, we can immediately terminate that and no longer share that data with them.
Thank you for that. So the prohibitions that we have on our system in terms of what can and cannot be searched, does that also apply then to those other agencies as they're searching?
Is prohibitions as far as?
So like our system says that, or our, our guidance says and our policy says that it would not be used for immigration or those sorts of searches. Does that prohibit then a partner agency from searching our system for an immigration case?
I'm not aware, I mean, Chief, Colin, I, we posed that question, the Arizona Association of Chiefs of Police, and I'm not aware of any agencies that are using ALPR scans to share with immigration enforcement. So is it possible? Yes, if that happened, we would, we would terminate the trust with them and we would turn them off as far as sharing with them.
Okay, yeah, and that was going to be my next question was if there were cities, counties or other state agencies that have indicated cooperation with ICE or federal immigration enforcement or federal policing agencies that are outside of our, our guidelines for our system, would we be willing to either reduce sharing with them or turn off their access to our system? Or I guess that, that's it, not or?
Let me, Councilmember House, I really appreciate your mindset on this. Let me be very clear. You have, you remember how the officer has to enter the system, identify themselves, and enter an incident number and their, and their crime? If, if I through our audits find out that any of these 50 partners have deceived us in this concept of using this for immigration only, we're done with them and I will, I will turn them off.
Thank you. Last question for now, because I'm eager, as I'm sure everyone else is, to get to the public comment on this. We, I think you both talked about the, and CJ as well, looking into the creation of a citizen advisory council for technology or for, for this system. Is that something that you are able or willing to commit to as, like that, that will be a, a thing that we have rather than just looking into it?
Yeah, yes, and I ask the council and mayor, city leadership to hold me and Chief accountable. If we do a six-month check-in and we're not having meetings or have, at least formed a committee by the six-month check-in, you know, please cancel the contract at that point too, if it moves forward to that point.
Thank you very much. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. All right, so we're going to take public comment. And for those who came in after I've made the announcements, to provide comment, we're going to need a comment card from you. They're located in the back and you can hand them to Stacy, who has her hand up here. You have three minutes. There's a clock here so that you can time yourself. And just a reminder that we know there are strong perspectives on this topic and we want to hear from everyone. We also want to make sure that everyone feels comfortable sharing their perspective with us. So we ask that you refrain from any outward sign of support or opposition. Let's just get through these comments and, and hear what you all have to say. I know that we're eager to hear it.
Mayor, if I may, just, just really quickly for everyone's knowledge here. The council isn't here tonight to vote on it. They are here to give us, you are here to give us direction. After hearing from everyone, council can discuss and direct staff to either let the contract go, expire, or put this on a future agenda for potential action on that contract. Thanks.
All right. So I'm going to call the first name and then I'm going to call the one that comes after that so you can, you can get prepared. Taylor Searchy and then Isaac Muska, Muski.
Members of the council, hello. My name is Taylor Searchy and I live in Sunnyside. Concerning the issue of the Flock cameras, I am in favor of canceling the current contract with Flock, but I am open to the city signing a new contract with Flock or another provider of automatic license plate readers. I am open to the idea because they have actually accomplished their stated mission, catching criminals and helping victims. Like the one-year-old kidnapping victim that was saved last month. But we do need to make sure that these cameras are only doing their stated mission within the legal bounds that we set. I've heard a lot of promises about these cameras. We promise we won't share data without cause. We promise the data is only stored for 30 days. We promise it's only checking the license plate and vehicles. But are these just promises or are they legally binding promises with severe repercussions if broken? And even if these promises are being kept now, do we have a legal guarantee that they will be kept in the future? Now, I don't know what's specifically in the city's contract with Flock. As far as I can tell, the details aren't publicly available. But we do need to include a part that says something along the lines of, if Flock deviates from the very narrow scope of data usage outlined in this contract, they will be fined no less than a million dollars per vehicle or personally identifying information. Fees to be split between city of Flagstaff and the person whose information was mishandled. That might get people on board. Now, I don't know if Flock would agree to sign that contract, but they should, right? They should be willing to sign a contract that includes harsh punishments for actions that the company has stated they will not do. In a similar vein, we need to pass laws that restrict the usage by law enforcement and not just have internal policies, though I am glad that they're there. I've heard the argument that it's dangerous to limit police resources, but honestly, that argument should fall on deaf ears. For example, it would make police work a lot easier if they could just enter any private residence whenever they felt like it. But thankfully, it is codified into law that they need a warrant. That's the thing. We can design legally defined avenues for fruitful police work to be done while also protecting our civil liberties. That's honestly my main point with all this, that it doesn't have to be all or nothing. It doesn't have to be one or the other. It doesn't have to be either new technology used by companies and law enforcement that effectively answer to no one because there's no legally defined repercussions in the event of misuse or no new technology at all. We can and should design a system of checks and balances for this new technology, so that is helpful and not harmful. Therefore, we should cancel the existing contract. And if we pass new laws that act as checks and balances, and if all parties agree, then we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. And we have a question from Councilmember House.
Thank you very much for your comments, Taylor. I just wanted to clarify because one of the, the action that we were considering previously was an amendment to the contract. So it was going to be updated and, and changed. I'm looking now for Chief to verify that I'm correct on that. But with your stance on this, are you looking for complete cancellation versus amendment? Or would you be open to that amendment if that was putting in place the things that we're, we're talking about today?
I'm just worried that until any laws are passed as protections, then it kind of is free game. You know, we are taking everyone's word for it that they won't abuse their power. And honestly, we should not take the government or a company's word that they won't abuse their power. It should be codified into law. So unless the amendment was passed today with laws in place that, you know, act as protections, I think we should cancel, pass the laws, then reinstate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Taylor. Isaac Muski and then Sage Panetta.
Mayor, councilmembers, I've heard a lot of chatter online about how there's no expectation of privacy in public. But I find this notion to be absurd. If you'd walk for me, with me for a moment into a strange hypothetical, from a neurological perspective, the thoughts in your brain produce an EMF signature. And this signature can be read with a bunch of electrodes strapped, you know, around your skull. And clearly, you can't read someone's thoughts without the permissions, right? But the very same, same argument of not having an, an expectation of privacy in public comes to mind. After all, these frequencies are just in the air. And because I have this chip already installed in my head, I can hear a lot of you thinking, that's ridiculous. This technology would never come to exist or Flock is a far cry from brain-reading machines. While it's true that this technology is not avail, available yet, agreeing to have this sort of ever-present monitoring system around makes it easier for such systems to be put in place in the future. After all, there's a lot of public safety concerns that would certainly be alleviated if we knew the next time someone was going to be a school shooter or a terrorist. This is all to say that certainly there is a lot of personal privacy sacrificed in the name of safety. Currently, while it's not reading our minds, these Flock devices track motions of individuals through license plate readings as well as building a profile of the type of person that would be on the road at a certain time, that would have a slight scratch, that would be driving a Subaru instead of a Ford. And this database can be used with other, in conjunction with other databases. It sounds like I learned a lot tonight about the contract that Flagstaff has with Flock, but it's certainly in other cities, Flock sells that data to other private database companies. Time and time again, companies have insisted that they have proper cybersecurity protocols in place, only to be hacked. Even if you believe, which I personally don't, that Flock is not going to do anything nefarious with the thousands of data points that they are collecting about each individual person here in Flagstaff, the fact that the data exists means that it's possible for the data to be breached, either in a hack or a data leak or by a disgruntled employee. Further, the contract that I'm sure that Flock has protects Flock from any wrongdoing. This is almost universal with Flock contracts. This means that if there's a false report, which happens occasionally with OCR, which is the technology that Flock uses, and the Flagstaff Police Department shows up with gun-straught and a perfectly innocent family, it's the Flagstaff taxpayers that have to cover the lawsuit, not Flock. This has already happened several times and I pray that doesn't happen in Flagstaff. If the council is dead-set on having a system such as Flock in place, I think that we should demand that Flock pay for any potential lawsuits and that data is exclusive to the Flagstaff Police Department and that there are guaranteed price locks in place that in three years, Flock can't raise the price of subscription services.
Thank you. Sage Panetta and then Marcellus Childs.
All right. Hello, Flagstaff community members and city council members. My name is Sage Panetta. I live here in Flagstaff. I just want to say first, it's so great to see a room packed with people who care. I'm so glad you all are here and that we had to move the wall back. We're all here today because we care about our community and want it to be a safe place where we can all thrive together. I know we all feel that supporting the safety of our community is crucial. However, increased surveillance is not the answer. Flock AI is frequently misused and continues to be misused despite the supposed corrections on behalf of Flock. There are many recent instances of people across the country being wrongfully held at gunpoint, detained, arrested using these cameras. Just imagine that one of your families or one of your families is being wrongfully dragged out of a vehicle because of an incorrect Flock hit. Yes, this has happened and I do believe that will continue to happen. Furthermore, these cameras are liable to misuse and overpatrolling of our community members due to the nationwide policing practices that criminalize and overpatrol people of color, poor people, disabled people, immigrants, queer and trans people, to name just a few. One of the police people said that Flocks takes profiling out of patrolling and surveillance. If that is the case, I wonder why there are five Flock cameras around the Home Depot. How is that not a racialized decision? Flock cameras around the Home Depot. How is that not a racialized decision? I hear these police people concern, voicing concern about decreasing and solving crime, and I imagine that that is a concern that we all share. We all want a safe and healthy community, but at the root of most crime is a need that isn't being met. Whether it's an inability to access affordable housing, or secure a job to disabilities, crime in our community requires a deeper collaborative investigation into the root causes of crime in our beautiful city, not more cameras. To you wonderful community members, I wish this microphone was facing the other way. This is really about your privacy and the well-being of our neighbors and our community. In a time of intense repression, harm, and surveillance, these cameras will continue to support the authoritarian surveillance regime we're already experiencing. Keep showing up, keep trusting your gut. Y'all got this. And so, to the city council members, I ask you to wax a bit nostalgic for a moment. What was it that made you want to become involved in local government? I remember the sense of excitement, hope, and determination you had to make Flagstaff an even better place to live. I imagine many, if not all of you, want to make a difference and do good for your community, your families, your friends. So I encourage you, act from your sense of integrity. See all the caring community members here today. Say no to Flock.
Thank you, Sage.
Thank you.
Chief, Vice Mayor has a question for you.
Thank you, Sage, for your comments. And I wanted to give Chief an opportunity to talk about, there's been a couple of concerns already about false, false information, or false positives, false identity with using Flock. Can you go into that, please?
Mayor, members of council, Vice Mayor, or Vice Mayor suite, yeah, a couple of things. Flock does not sell their data. I just want to be very clear. I've heard that a lot in our conversations with Flock. So that's one inaccurate comment, as it relates to that. We don't have five cameras around the Home Depot. I don't know where that comes from. We, we made a very intentional effort to make sure we put it in public thorough affairs of ingress and ingress, so if a journey of crime occurred, we would be able to capture that person coming and going. And then, as it relates to the conversation about precision policing, you know, law enforcement agencies around the country, when they respond to a scene absent this technology, rely on the humanness of witness information, which at times, under stress and trauma, is inaccurate. And having been around a lot of that, and seen the wrong vehicle description given under that umbrella, and officers stopping the wrong vehicle based on witness, acting with good intent, there is that potential for liability. I believe, in watching this system play out, not only here, but in thousands of communities across the country, that it actually reduces that. You heard us talk about, this, this system does not discriminate. This system is not biased. This system does not take into account that. It simply provides that photo of a license plate in the back of a car. And so I think we get a lot more accurate, actually, as it relates to the ability to stop the right vehicle based on what is going on at that time. The other thing, too, is it's a really a bigger conversation about overpolicing. A lot of us worked nationally on the issue post the horrific murder of George Floyd, to make sure that we're not overpolicing and casting broad nets in communities. This technology helps us really narrow that focus, and that's been my experience with it, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for letting me ask that question, Mayor.
Sure.
Thanks, Sage.
Does anyone have any questions for the, okay. We have, Councilmember Garcia has a question for Chief.
Chief, since we were on the topic, I thought it would be important to speak to this, because in my extensive research, and mulling around town, looking up at the sky quite a bit the last couple of months, to see where cameras are and what they are, I've noticed that we have a bunch of cameras. When I say "we," I don't mean City of Flagstaff. I mean Flagstaff in general. And what I'm, what I'm thinking is, and you might not know this answer, is most of them are owned by private property owners who have cameras on their lots for various reasons. And that may have been some of what the commenter was speaking to, when he was talking about Home Depot. I don't know. I'd avoided going to Home Depot. I had no reason to go there, so. But if I did, and I saw some Flock cameras there, you've assured us that they're not the City of Flagstaff's. Are you aware that other private property owners are using ALRPE or similar systems here in the city?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Garcia, thank you for the insightful question. We have seen just an incredible explosion of personal use, business use, of video technology. You know, you'll hear a lot of chiefs around the country try to take credit for the double-digit year-to-year reduction in burglaries. I'm not going to do that to the extent that the Ring camera system and so many home systems that are always capturing the journey of crime are, are out there. There are many communities going to digital block watches. It's less intrusive, and in agreements with individual property owners, creating conduits of communication into real-time operation centers to watch crime happen as it's happening. So businesses, residential neighborhoods, those that are ambassadors of tourism, that want to provide live video to places of recreation and tourism are participating in this. There are, there are cameras being used by utility companies to monitor smoke that could possibly happen in our forests. And I would hope, I would hope, that if on a wind day, in a bad situation, somebody with a dark heart goes southwest of here and tries to start a wildfire in this community, that we would want access to that license plate as they egressed or ingress back into our community. So yes, there's a tremendous amount of technology on a whole host of levels being used by private sector and community.
I appreciate that. Mayor, I just had a quick comment that pertains to this point.
Can you make it afterward, so we can get through the public comment? So people can, if they need to leave, they can leave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Marcellus Childs, and then Brendan Trashel.
Hello, council. So what can you say about the successes of Flock? At least how they've been listed out to the public? Through my research, I've found that they utilize ALPR cameras to create driver profiles for the cars or license plates, and then record, record this on their Flock database first. Outside of a concerning amount of data to solve the crime ratio, this technology has not only been misused, but has led to accidents and solve, false positives across the country and in this community. Earlier this year in April, I reported my car stolen after a friend's birthday. The morning after, I alerted police and was in contact with a few officers following the air tag that I hid in my car. However, while on the search, the police report led to the use of Flock cameras, explicitly the ones on San Francisco Street. While I appreciated the cops' help to locate my air tag I hid in my car, it became skeptical about the honesty of my story. As Flock showed my car heading across San Francisco Street around 11 o'clock at night, they began chalking it down to an irresponsible driving, and threatening me with even driving under the influence. I could only assume that with the picture that they took of my car, they specifically, didn't make it a race thing, but they saw the color of the person driving the car was not white. Although it wasn't carried out, it was the assumption that that officer made in the moment, due to the evidence that Flock gave him. Do you really believe that ALPRs compare to regular LPRs, and the extensive use of red light cameras throughout Flagstaff, that arguably do a better and less invasive job of identifying and protecting our streets? In situations like this, I want to give the benefit of the doubt. I understand this is a college town. Mistakes happen. Assumptions must be made sometimes. But as a black man in an overwhelmingly white community, my fear of that day was real. What happens when the mistakes aren't a simple misunderstanding? Taking Colorado with the Gillum family, are you prepared to award misidentified individuals $1.9 million for a mistake that ALPR systems, that you're only paying $100,000 for, when a black family of four was pulled out of their car at gunpoint, due to a mistake that these ALPRs have committed? Although the barrel wasn't lingering on me, these systems are not foolproof. Accidents that result in real traumas for these families, leaving only the companies and their technologies an absurd amount of power. As individuals who have the privilege to seek a higher education, I value the ability of being able to influence or change your world. This generation has been terribly depressing, born into a literal melting world of hate and prejudice. It's easy to be hopeless. But I don't want to be hopeless anymore. I want to believe that I am important enough here as a resident and a voter in, in Flagstaff, to sway my community. And the education we were raised and preaches the importance of speaking out when we see injustice. You can downplay our opinions as much as you want, but I matter. We matter. Thank you.
Thank you. We're not doing that. Remember? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brendan Trashel, and then Caitlin Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It is again my privilege to present this petition and stand before you for the fourth time, opposing Flagstaff's contract with Flock Safety. Over these last seven months, I've had the opportunity to speak with fellow community members, and some of you, about the risks this system brings to our community. Talking about the same thing for the fourth time can get repetitive. So I thought my short time is better spent recapping what we know about Flock. We know that Flock is an unregulated AI surveillance system with contracts with over 5,000 communities. We know that Flock cameras track our daily movements through a checkpoint system. We know that our data is stored without suspicion for extended periods of time. We know that our data is used to train Flock's AI, which means that remnants of our data are stored in perpetuity. We know that Flock's patent on their AI states that it can be trained to look for anything, not just vehicle characteristics. We know that nationally, the top Flock database search reason is the word "investigation," followed closely by the, by "I-N-V," which is short for investigation. We know that Flock let Border Patrol access our cameras without our consent. We know that Flock let ICE access our cameras without our consent. We know that Flock let the Secret Service access our cameras without our consent. We know that Flock let the United States Navy access our cameras without our consent. We know that Flock CEO completely omitted the fact that federal agency had direct access to the Flock database, twice. We know that when Flock gives wrong information that police act on, the city is liable. We know that there is no independent research that proves ALPRs reduce crime. And we know that this conversation has been framed as, how can we modify the ALPR policy, when it really is, should we have ALPRs in Flagstaff in the first place? Flock cameras are a violation, a liability, an intrusion, and a mistake. Flagstaff's ideal relationship with Flock is none at all. The taxpayers of this community have no desire to continue funding our own surveillance. This system does not belong in our community, and council, you, must act as clearly and swiftly as possible to remove it. The time for talking is over. The time for action is now. We must end this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin Hughes, and then Ammon Barker.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for, for providing this time to listen to the community about this very important issue. My name's Caitlin Hughes, and I have been a resident of Flagstaff for five years. I'm in favor of the termination of this contract, because I am not in favor of any increased surveillance that I view as infringement upon my personal freedoms and the freedoms of others in our community. As was alluded to earlier in this meeting, I think there are many potential reasons why this particular issue has become of high public interest lately. My opinions on this issue are deeply rooted in the concerns about larger cultural issues in this country related to surveillance and personal privacy. Increased surveillance has historically played a key role in developing and implementing totalitarian, totalitarian systems of governance by enabling the state to consistently monitor and control the population, suppress dissent to an approved, to an approved narrative, and maintain power through fear. Surveillance in totalitarian governments often involves systematic data collection and monitoring of citizens' activities and movements, which aids, aids regimes in enforcing strict social controls and limiting individual freedoms. One of these measures, often these measures are implemented under the guise of added safety and security to the public. While I do see the benefits of this technology for our community if used appropriately, as illustrated earlier in this meeting, I do firmly believe that increased surveillance is an infringement upon our personal freedoms, and has many severe risks. I'm here today to oppose the surveillance and invasion of personal privacy. I respectfully request that the council consider these concerns, as well as larger cultural issues, when deciding how to proceed on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Ammon Barker, and then Jennifer Rungy.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. My name's Ammon Barker. I am a Coconino County attorney and a resident of Flagstaff. I want to acknowledge, first of all, that I don't believe that this is an all-or-nothing proposition. This is not black and white. Very few things are. And I believe this community is sophisticated enough to grapple with the tension between privacy and security without giving up either one completely. I also acknowledge that there are various perspectives on this issue, and, and I respect that. We all have different burdens of knowledge, and I can only speak from my own, my own experience. I'm a criminal law practitioner. I've spent my career speaking to victims of crime, attending crime scenes, reading police reports. There's probably not a neighborhood in Flagstaff that I haven't visited where a crime has occurred that I haven't personally prosecuted. And so, this is personal to me, in terms of how we protect the victims of our community. I can't help but think about the murder suspect who was arrested by the use of this technology, or the threat to the hospital that was averted, or the hit-and-run that was solved, the kidnapping that was solved. These are real events that happened in this community. I also, as a county prosecutor, am concerned about our community members just outside of Flagstaff, our partners, including our tribal partners. Last month, I received 15 notices of missing persons from the Navajo Nation, 15 in a single month. This technology can aid in those investigations. And that's an important issue for MMIP, and it's an important issue for this community. I'm also deeply concerned about our marginalized community members, who are most often the victims and witnesses of crime. Missing this technology, or not using this technology, would hurt them the most. Now, I, I can acknowledge, and I understand, the perspective on the other side, that privacy is deeply important, and I respect that. In the last year, as far as I can understand, and far as I know, there has been no misuse by our police department. There's been no federal interference. There's been no hacking. Those are concerns, but they're hypothetical concerns for this community. And more importantly, they are solvable problems. And we should endeavor to solve those problems, instead of abandoning a technology that could keep us all safer. Again, I want to acknowledge, again, that this is not an all-or-nothing proposition. There are opportunities here for oversight, for auditing, that can protect our privacy, but also keep our community members safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jennifer Rungy, and then Father Peter Dobrowski.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Jen Rungy, and I serve as the Executive Director of Victim Witness Services for Northern Arizona. Our organization provides free and confidential victim services throughout Coconino County and the Navajo Nation within Arizona. Victims can come to us from any direction, and we do not require a police report to receive assistance. Our top referral source, however, is law enforcement. We work closely with law enforcement to support victims of violent crime, domestic violence, and sexual assault throughout our community. Every day, we see how safety, justice, and trust are all connected. I want to start by acknowledging something very real in this conversation: people's fear. Fear that our privacy is eroding, fear that technology can be misused, and that, in today's polarized political climate, tools meant to protect us could one day be turned against us. Those fears are valid. They come from a deep desire for safety and autonomy, both of which are community values. I also want to acknowledge the commitment of our law enforcement officers and leadership. We appreciate that they are open and willing to create safeguards. Technology like Flock cameras can be an asset in that mission, helping identify suspects, recover vehicles, and support investigations that bring justice to victims. But any system that collects and stores personal data, especially data tied to movement and location, must come with clear, transparent safeguards, not because we assume misuse, but because strong systems prevent it. Oversight protects, protects everyone, the public, victims, and officers alike. When victims come forward, they share deeply personal information, where they live, where they work, and where they hide. If technology like this were ever misused, intentionally or accidentally, it could re-traumatize them or place them at risk. Even the perception of misuse can erode- Even the perception of misuse can erode the trust we've worked so hard to build. And once that trust is gone, victims will stop reporting crimes and community safety suffers. I'm not here to argue against technology. I'm here to ask for balance, for thoughtful policies that ensure the use of Flock cameras includes independent oversight, regular audits, and clear limits on access and retention. Those measures don't undermine law enforcement, they strengthen it. In a time when people are anxious about privacy and power, transparency isn't optional, it's essential. I believe Flagstaff can lead with balance, embracing innovation while upholding accountability and the values this community cares deeply about: safety, transparency, and respect for privacy. And since I have 10 seconds left, I'll say if we have a Citizens Oversight Committee, I would love to be part of that. Thank you.
Father Peter Dobrowski and then Tyler Stein.
Mayor and Council Members, my, I'm Father Peter Dobrowski. I'm a retired Catholic priest, but I'm speaking now as an individual citizen. I was pastor at Our Lady of Guadalupe here in Flagstaff from 1986 to 1991, before the parishes were consolidated into San Francisco de Acees Parish. And I lived here in retirement by my choice since 2016. This evening, I'm asking the Council that when they vote on Flock, will I be less safe than I've been? Will the Flagstaff Police Department be effective, be as effective in preventing and fighting crime as they've been? Or will hypothetical issues about the rights of privacy and speculation about the federal government, what the federal government might possibly do, leave me less safe because bringing criminals to justice will be more difficult in this city that I love? At the public hearing on September the 2nd and today, I've heard conjecture about what abuses might happen, about an abuse that did happen in Texas and Flock corrected it, so it can't happen again, and fears over the Trump administration. But the facts I've heard have come from the police department and how this tool has enabled them to prevent tragedies like suicides, helped them to find missing children and senior adults, and enabled them to bring criminals like hit-and-run drivers to justice. Brag plates, commercial frames around license plates, and bumper stickers are there because people want the backs of their cars to be seen. So how can the back of a car and its license plate be private when it's on a public street? I'm asking you, please, have the courage to support our police department and keep your citizens and our visitors safe.
Thank you. Tyler Stein and then Alyssa Hastings.
Mayor and Members of the Council, my name is Tyler Stein. I am a policy analyst with Royal Arizona Action, and we are here to support the removal of the Flock cameras in the city of Flagstaff. These cameras are, collect license plate numbers and take pictures of drivers and their passengers, including children. Collecting this data is an invasive violation of privacy and lays the groundwork for a dangerous mass surveillance state. By tracking and monitoring a person's everyday move, Flock cam, Flock can find out when and where parents drop off their kids at school or daycare. It can find out when and where immigrants attend their places of worship. It can find out when and where a woman with an ectopic pregnancy goes to receive medical attention. Then whoever has, whoever has access to this information, whether that be Flock itself, individual police officers, or a hacker, they can turn around and share that data however they want. This would give someone the ability to know an innocent person's whereabouts without them knowing. Another concern we have is that this data could make it easier for federal agencies such as ICE to track the locations of members of our immigrant communities. Even though Flock currently does not have a contract with the federal government, there have been reports in other jurisdictions that are using this program, that local police have shared data they collect from the cameras with federal agencies such as ICE and the Border Patrol. An example of this happening was in Washington State, where it was uncovered that the Border Patrol accessed data in several jurisdictions that were using the cameras, even though there were systems in place that were supposed to prevent other agencies from accessing the data. This would just be another way for the federal government to put more unnecessary fears into our communities. There is also the risk that these cameras can be used as a tool to track individuals from states that have bans on gender-affirming or reproductive care that are trying to seek care in a state where it is legal. These cameras are a waste of resources and tax dollars, and there are other ways that we can solve crime in our communities. We respectfully ask that you consider removing the cameras. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa Hastings and then Taylor Lundstrom.
Hi, and good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I want to start this out by saying I respect the Flagstaff Police, but I do not agree with Flock cameras. Flock Safety is worth around $7.5 billion. This company is for-profit and exists to bring in revenue. At the most recent talk about these cameras from the Flagstaff Police Department on October 16th, they mentioned that Flock cameras are like a tool, like they're guns and tasers. We entrust our officers to carry and use these tools for people's protection and for their own. These tools do not violate our rights to privacy, and they do not contribute to mass surveillance, unlike Flock cameras, which is a concern for people's freedom. In other jurisdictions, Flock cameras have been misused to stalk exes, officers have taken bribes to give out information, and shared information with unorganized authorizations. In our small town, I would hope our officers would not do this, but there is no guarantee. Assuming Flag PD would not misuse the information, there is an estimate of around $140,000 per year for a subscription to use these cameras. That money is directly supporting Flock. Also in that meeting on October 16th, they said that collaboration does not happen without trust. But how can we trust these AI cameras when they are put up without the consent of the people? How can we trust that our information is safe? And how can we trust that these cameras don't have algorithmic bias? In Oak Park, Illinois, 84% of people in the first 10 months of Flock cameras being used were people of color. According to data USA, Oak Park is 61% white. In 2025, it was revealed that ICE used Flock data for immigration enforcement. The company made a statement that data collection inherently creates privacy risks, but our data should not be a privacy risk for this company to profit off of us. It is said on the website that about only 10% of crime is solved from these cameras, but this has been criticized as a marketing claim to help sell cameras. It was criticized for its methodology because there, of its varied and incomplete data for meaningful statistics. The data goes to successful cases and not unsolved cases or false leads from these cameras. When Flock makes a mistake, the taxpayers pay. At the core of all of this, mass surveillance is abusive power. It is invasive and perfect for misuse. These cameras, for those who don't mind being tracked, offer a false sense of security. Not to mention, there is a new update for these cameras that not only take photos, but they will also take videos of cars that go by. The AI cameras do not just record and track criminals. These systems collect large amounts of information on vehicles and their movements. Flock will not make our community safer, but it will take away our right to privacy and have our information collected. Thank you.
Thank you. Taylor Lundstrom and then Sydney R.
Mayor and Council Members, it is my belief that we need to end the Flock contract. To be tracked without your consent is unconstitutional, and it has caused a lot of harm and distress for many people. One of these people is my boyfriend. One night a couple weeks ago, he got pulled over by a police officer for allegedly doing a rolling stop. This was in Prescott, which is not far from Flagstaff. He didn't know Flock cameras were in his area at the time. The officer let him go with a warning. That same night, he got pulled over again. The officers, two of them, had approached him and had outright said that they had lied about pulling him over for the rolling stop, and that they tried to get information on him because there was suspicious activity in the area. Mind you, my boyfriend was just trying to do his job, and he was simply passing through the area. He proceeded to be treated unfairly by the officers. They searched his car without probable cause, they grilled him with questions, and they handcuffed him and put him in the back of the police car. This was all because there was suspicious activity, and he happened to be near it without knowing it. He said, "The experience was utterly humiliating, dehumanizing, hopeless, and embarrassing. Though ultimately freed, I was shaken and believed life would be drastically altered for something my mind was scrambling to determine." He later got a letter in the mail that told him police officers had used a Flock camera to track him down, even though he was completely innocent. We both are still unsure what it is the police were looking for and why they deemed him to be a suspect for something that was going on at the time. This experience is just one of many that people have experienced with regards to this issue. It is incredibly distressing for the person going through it, and as well as the people close to them. It is terrifying, and it's just unconstitutional. We, as a community, need to do better to protect our privacy, something that all of us deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Sydney R. and then Brett Axland.
Good afternoon, Mayor Daggett and Council Members. I'm Sydney. I live right down the street, and I'm here to voice my opposition to our city's partnership with Flock Safety. There is nothing safe about Flock Safety. There are zero substantial checks or balances on Flock. There is no independent research suggesting that ALPRs, automatic license plate readers, reduce crime, and there is absolutely no guarantee that our data is safe or will continue to be. Flock is already notorious for violating privacy, so why are we allowing them in our city? Why didn't we, residents of the city, get a say in this decision? Trust has been broken, and today you have an opportunity for repair. In Auburn, Washington, federal immigration agents accessed Flock cameras illegally and without approval. In Wichita, Kansas, an officer used Flock data to stalk his estranged wife. I wonder how she feels about Flock Safety. In San Francisco, a woman was pulled out of her car at gunpoint because of an error the ALPR made. Furthermore, Flock cameras are more likely to surveil communities with a higher density of Black and Brown people, reinforcing systemic racism in policing. No, these cities are not Flagstaff, yet it's only a matter of time before these things, or God forbid worse, happen here too. Despite best intentions for the protection of victims, this company cannot be trusted for safety here in Flagstaff or anywhere. If this issue is really about caring for victims, let them tell you what they need. Let them have an opportunity to meaningfully participate and voice what would bring them justice. As a survivor myself, I can tell you that justice is not achieved through mass surveillance technology. Trust has been broken by the fact that the Flock cameras are already up in our city without any public input, and today you have the opportunity for repair. We don't need a Citizens Advisory Group. We need Flock out of Flagstaff and to repair trust with the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett Axland and then Richard Clark.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Brett Axland. I serve as the Coconino County Sheriff. There is technology today all around us. We know that. There is a reason why intersections with red light cameras have less red light runners and related injury collisions. There's a reason speed ticketing radar slows traffic down. There's a reason Ring cameras are so important and so popular. There's a reason TSA is present at airports, uses body scanners, and hand searches personal bags. There's a reason you slow down on the interstate when your Waze app shows law enforcement There's a reason so many people follow their kids with a Find My iPhone app. You've heard many concerns on both sides of the license plate reader technology tonight. There's been a lot of good information that's come out. As the Sheriff of Coconino County and one of several law enforcement leaders in Northern Arizona, I made a promise to protect our communities from violent criminals. In a region that has extremely limited law enforcement representation, in the second largest county in the nation, we must leverage technology as best we can within the law. Just as a reference, if you live in the unincorporated communities of the Flagstaff area, those that call Flagstaff home as well, like Doni Park, Timberline, Fernwood, Baderville, Muntz Park, Kachina Village, Mountaineer, all these communities are being right now protected by four patrol Taco Bell down the street has more staff on than we have deputies assigned to a massive patrol district. Out of Flagstaff, stretching from Tuba City to south of Muntz Park to Winslow, Blue Ridge, Mormon Lake, and Kendrick Park, I say this to ask for your help. The Navajo Nation has recently pursued a large contract involving participation in a license plate reader program, as they have similar challenges with a lack of officers on the road and an extended response time even for emergencies. We partner and share information with our Navajo Nation, who is dealing with the well-known epidemic of missing murdered and indigenous persons. Paige Williams, our county and Flagstaff have all been actively participating and sharing information from license plate readers resulting in numerous successful violent crime investigations that you will continue to hear about. Finally, I choose not to create a sanctuary safe zone for violent criminals, where there is no deterrence or accountability for unspeakable acts against our citizens. Please listen to the ask of what I know is one of the best police agencies in this state of Arizona, the Flagstaff Police Department. Thank you once again for your partnership and support for the safety of those living in and visiting Northern Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Clark and then Maureen Judith. Richard Clark. All right, moving on to Maureen Judith. And after Maureen, Aiden Ashkar. Is Maureen Judith here?
Hello, Council. Hello, Mayor. I would like to start off by saying that Flock has deliberately lied to you. It has lied to our police, and it has lied to our community. There is no evidence that Flock reduces crime and that they have, they have made unethical attempts to prove otherwise. They have spread false claims and false evidence as to how successful their license plate readers are. And they do this all to make a quick buck off of law enforcement. They are a for-profit company that is focused on making money and not safety, and they have lied just for money. And they, without a warrant, probable cause, or reasonable suspicion of wrongdoing, detailed information about your movements are being shared with many organizations and agencies. Any individual police officer and many other law enforcement agents are given the unchecked power to track whomever they wish. This is not at all safe for the people of Flagstaff. There is so much potential for misuse with Flock. Data from Flock has led to wrongful arrests. It has been used to stalk the ex-partners of police officers. And all that data is kept for, depending on what it is, for months. That can be used to train like Flock's AI. There is, ultimately, there is like no reason to keep Flock around. It does, there's no proof that it significantly reduces crime, and it costs so much money to keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you. Isaiah Emanuel and then Catherine Bennett.
Hello, and it's Isaiah. Sorry. Hi, I'm Isaiah Emanuel, and I'm speaking against the Flock cameras. My eyes can't believe what they're seeing. I am seeing a man who didn't ask for permission, always looking over my shoulder. I am seeing a man looking to see where I might go, looking to see where I, who I might meet, looking to see what I'm looking at. And then he's whispering into my ear, "Do not be concerned." It is for- It is for your safety." When should I be concerned? Should I be concerned when I learn that he's starting to track my habits and starting to track my movements? Or should I be concerned when there's not just one man, but hundreds of men behind me looking over the same shoulder? Or should I be concerned when I see his arms beginning to reach across my shoulder and restrain me? This man represents the Flock cameras that are used all around the city. These cameras, however, are not just plate readers. They do much more than that. They can identify vehicles without plates, from the color of the car, the make, the model, even those dents on the side of the car. And this system records routes of these vehicles, collects data, and tracks individuals. The police department uses this information, but anyone can really access this information, whether it be data leaks or someone that pays a pretty penny for it. You know, to be able to have access to Flock database or even any of these data, you have to be leasing these Flock cameras. So that means the private businesses that they have, they have these Flock cameras and they're able to access this data as well. These Flock cameras are used to invade the liberties of individuals under the guise of security and restrict their freedoms. This includes women seeking abortions and healthcare, immigrants who lack a piece of paper, and already disadvantaged, or simply a woman who rejected a man now having to suffer a stalker behind a screen and a lens. Flock cameras do not provide safety for those who are vulnerable or did nothing wrong, but they do aid those who wish to control us. Those who wish to take advantage of us, there is a man behind my back, behind all of our backs. I know who he is, and I know you can see him. He is only there to threaten us, threaten me, and even you. I urge you, a representative of the community, to vote to relieve us from this man behind our back, from all of our backs. Vote to remove Flock cameras out of Flagstaff. Choose our liberty instead of those who seek to control. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Catherine Bennett and then Kayden Dwyer.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all today. My name is Catherine Bennett, and I'm a senior at NAU, and I have lived in Flagstaff for four years, and I hope to live here for the years to come. I found community and belonging in this special community, and through my work as a teacher, a community organizer, an environmentalist, and a concerned citizen, I am here to ask you to get rid of Flock cameras out of Flagstaff. With the rise of authoritarianism and the use of AI across the globe, I am scared that these AI surveillance cameras are in my community. I'm scared about my future. I'm scared about my rights. I'm scared about my friends and family. And yet, I stand here shaking and scared, urging you to serve and protect the people of Flagstaff against unconsensual surveillance. In the summer of 2004, the city of Flagstaff signed a contract with Flock, a private tech company, and set up 36 AI-powered cameras across the city. The contract was signed without public comment, discussion, or notice, and since then, citizens have been fighting an uphill battle to have their voices heard and to get any information on what Flock is and how it works at all. Why after one and a half years are we just now holding a community discussion to talk about these Flock cameras, something that affects us all in our daily lives? Maybe Flagstaff's data sharing with different organizations doesn't concern you. However, according to the American Civil Liberty Union, multiple federal agencies such as Immigration and Customs Enforcement, known as ICE, and Border Patrol, Secret Service, and many more have already had access to Flock data across the country. Even if they don't have access now, a warrant is not needed to access Flock data, so how can we be sure that ICE won't come here and get our data after all? All it takes is an executive order, and the federal government will have access to all of our data and our daily movements across Flagstaff. This constant surveillance makes people scared, and it builds distrust within our community, between our family and friends, and they will harm and divide the Flagstaff community as these continue to be put up and we start to fear each other more and more. As an environmentalist, I'm also worried about the effects that AI has on our environment. There's little known about the effects of Flock cameras on our environment. And as a city that's dedicated to being sustainable, how can we say that we're sustainable if we're continuing to use these AI cameras that use so much energy to be used all the time? Whether you care about community, safety, or climate, Flock will not protect what you love. Constant surveillance of your daily movements, mass storage of data, energy demands, I don't think it's worth it to have it here. Thank you.
Thank you. Kayden Dwyer and then Kaitlyn Contreras.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kayden Dwyer. I'm also a senior here at NAU, and I've lived here for nearly four years, and for one and a half of those, I've been surveilled without my consent and without my knowledge until about two months ago. Driving is a necessity for many of us, and to be subject to non-consensual surveillance while commuting is not something I'm comfortable with and clearly not something our community is comfortable with either. The main concern I have with Flock is what will come of it in the future. Right now, it doesn't seem like that big of a deal, but there are programs that are being talked of and are currently like being worked on to be put into place. Flock Nova is a program being launched by the company to create a meta-database of information on vehicles and their drivers, and this includes your home address, phone number, and your face. They're also launching drones, a partnership with Ring Doorbell, and there's talk of pedestrian surveillance. It seems to me that the current surveillance that we are currently all being subject to is the beginning of what could very easily become something much bigger and much scarier. It has been said today that there are zero misuses from our police department, and there are currently constraints in place to prevent misuse in our community, but my concern is who could have access to that, to this information in the future, and how could they misuse this data? The federal government ultimately has been able to get away with much more than many of us thought possible, and they have much more power than our city police department. The administration isn't even a year old, and that gives them plenty of time to gain access to this information, not to mention they have had access to this information in the past, including ICE and other organizations. Removing the cameras before that could become a reality would make our community safer from misuse. Also, Flock has disproportionately affected minority communities. There are many more camera networks in areas dominated by people of color or other groups that are often unjustly deemed more prone to crime. Flock has been known to misuse data. They have been known to share this information with ICE in the past. Even if Flagstaff does not represent a minority community and our police department promises to never misuse this technology in this way, a contract with this company that has such a track record is enough of a reason to disallow them in our self-proclaimed progressive community. Lastly, I want to point out that I am part of a younger generation who has been surrounded by technology, so I think it speaks volumes that I am here today and all of us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kaitlyn Contreras and then Billy Gilmore.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Kaitlyn Contreras, a policy strategist with the American Civil Liberties Union of Arizona, and we are here in support of the removal of Flock cameras in the city of Flock Staff. ALPRs under ordinary circumstances present a significant threat to privacy as long-term vehicular location data can reveal very private details about a person's life, including what meetings a person attends, what doctor's offices, and religious institutions they visit, and even where they sleep at night. Unlike red light cameras or speed cameras, they're triggered, unlike red light cameras or speed cameras that are triggered by specific violations, these cameras photograph every vehicle that drives by, including people who have done nothing wrong, and can use artificial intelligence to create a profile with identifying information that then gets stored on a massive database. Flock's nationwide ALPR data sharing model has made local ALPR data available to virtually any law enforcement entity that wishes to access it. Because Flock does not have adequate safeguards in place to prevent inappropriate use or sharing of ALPR data, law enforcement from virtually any locality, state, federal agency, and even foreign government can access Flock ALPR data. Flock even shares location data with private entities, including HOAs, FedEx, Simon Property Group, and in some cases, individual homeowners. This raises alarming privacy concerns as well as serious questions about who has access to the location data of private, innocent citizens. Even when departments opt to restrict sharing in Flock system settings, they may not actually be protecting people's privacy. According to a public records request reviewed by the ACLU of Massachusetts, the template user agreement many law enforcement agencies sign hereby grants Flock a worldwide perpetual royalty-free rights and license to disclose any agency data for investigative purposes. The wide availability of Flock's ALPR data has predictably led to abuse and significant privacy violations. Flock's ALPR system is now being used to target members of vulnerable groups. For example, in Norfolk, Virginia, a retired veteran sued and discovered that Flock cameras had recorded his location over 500 times in a five-month period, which breaks down to about four times a day. His co-plaintiff, a healthcare worker, had been recorded 849 times in five months, or six times per day. An ALPR in Arkansas captured photos of a family's driveway and part of their front yard every time a vehicle drove by and photographed the family every time they left home or returned home until the Flock camera was removed. Flock cameras create extensive privacy concerns for our communities. The Flagstaff City Council must take action to stop this dangerous mass surveillance effort from harming our communities. We urge the city council to remove Flock Safety cameras from the city streets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Billy Gilmore and then Ren Carr.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and good afternoon, fellow citizens of Flagstaff. First, I'd just like to say the appreciation that I have for all of you for the amount of investigation and research that you've done on this program on behalf of the citizens. I think the quality of our flag police department is quite obvious, and I appreciate the fact that they have removed us from the national lookout list in hopes of maintaining our privacy at more of a local level. I appreciate the council's questions on specifics that you've received from citizens in regards to their concerns, especially to the access of data. I will reiterate from the very first comment that I've heard here, that I think that the Flock contract should be placed in a hold position so that more research and input can be done in areas of concern. I think the idea that we cancel the current contract would make a clean cut from Flock and make a statement for our city. Passing laws will establish what our community expects from Flock, and renegotiation of a new contract with them will ensure that those requests are included in our new contract. For example, Flock's payment of any expenses incurred for incorrect accusations and violations. I appreciate the community members who have spoken, both from our legal standpoint and advocates for those underserved in our community. I appreciate their accurate reference to specific cases where Flock has assisted. However, I do think that there needs to be clear policy and legal consequences, and I appreciate the invitation for independent audits and documentation with transparency. Thank you again for all the services that you provide our community. And to the community members here, I would like to encourage your continued participation, and please register between three and five new voters before the next election so that more people's opinions can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Ren Carr and then Scott McDonald.
Good evening, Council and community members. My name is Ren Carr, and I'm here to speak against the Flock cameras. A personal story, if you will. In high school, for my sophomore English class, I was required to read a rather popular book called 1984 by George Orwell, and because it was an honors English class, we participated in an experiment that lasted for about a month that was based on the conditions of a book. We had to use specific blue pens for all of our assignments and notes in every class, wear our backpacks a certain way, greet our teachers a certain way, and lived among secret police, our fellow classmates, who would tell the English teacher if anyone broke those rules, which resulted in lost points for any infractions. During this experiment, I found myself automatically resisting the surveillance, breaking the rules where no one can see me. I was graded on a paper on my experience at the end and noted that I would never allow myself to live in a place where the authoritarian surveillance state was a reality. What I didn't realize is at the time that my teacher was preparing me for a future they inevitably saw, one that I never thought would become a reality because this was just fiction, right? The book 1984 was supposed to act as a warning, not a guidebook. These ALPR Flock cameras open the doorways in more ways than one for a life in Orwellian hellscape. The use of these cameras against our citizens threatens our privacy, and with their new software update that will allow for video recording, it just validates our concerns and what we already knew about them. They make a profile, a fingerprint, if you will, of our vehicles and track our everyday movements. Congrats, you can now identify a vehicle based on license plate color and dents like they already could with police LPRs and the red light cameras that are already installed at every intersection. We've already seen plenty of cases of misuse from police enforcement around the country. It's faulty because it's AI and automated, and there are news stories all around the country of people being pulled out of their cars at gunpoint by their trusted police officers. There's still no federal legislation in this country that puts restrictions on this technology, and no one needs a warrant to access that data either. It is harmful. Our data is being put in a black box where we have no clue what happens to it. We, the citizens, are being watched thanks to your negligence to initially take public comment on this contract and properly inform your citizens. So I urge you all, please, to think of your citizens and get this harmful technology out of our city. Cancel the contract and get Flock out of Flag. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott McDonald and then Bonnie Boucher.
Good evening, Council. I am the current Security Director at the Flagstaff Mall, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today on this vital initiative. As the Security Director of the mall, I'm here to express our strong support for the city's continued use of the Flock cameras. In close partnership with our dedicated local police department, this technology isn't just about surveillance. It's about creating a safer and more vibrant space for everyone, and we're eager to align our mall's security efforts with the city's broader network to amplify these benefits. First, to affirm our commitment, the mall has fully endorsed the city's use of the Flock cameras, including the potential integration near our property. We see how these advanced license plate readers recognition systems have been deployed effectively in Flagstaff since 2024. Capturing objective vehicle data in real time and deterring criminal activity by supporting and potentially partnering with an expansion, we can create seamless safety net that expands from the city streets to our parking lots, entry points. This collaboration could build on the 36 cameras already within the city, enhancing the ability to respond swiftly to incidents that might affect our community. the ability to respond swiftly to incidents that might affect our community hub. Now consider profound positive impacts on our mall's tenants, hard-working retailers, restaurants, service providers, who form the backbone of our local community, economy and community. With Flock cameras in place throughout the city, we've observed, in similar implementations nationwide, a significant reduction in retail theft and organized retail crime rings, which cost businesses millions annually. For instances, malls equipped with this technology report a 30% drop in inventory loss during peak seasons like the holidays. This means our tenants can focus less on security concerns and more on growth, innovation, customer service. Lower theft rates translate to preserved jobs within the community, reduced insurance premiums, and the ability to invest in store improvements and expanded inventory. In essence, safer tenants lead to a thriving mall ecosystem, with businesses feeling empowered to succeed and contribute more taxes to the support to city services. Of course, this support comes with a commitment to thoughtful implementation, including transparent data, data policies that protect privacy. No facial recognition, no personal identifiers, just targeted vehicle data shared securely with law enforcement. By aligning with the city's Flock network, this could provide incidents faster response from law enforcement in our mall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie Boucher and then Sean Parson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Bonnie Boucher, and I am a Flagstaff resident, as well as I support local business in our community. As most of you know, I manage the Flagstaff Mall. I work very closely with our law enforcement agencies, and in some situations, I have to say, unfortunately, I work very closely with our law enforcement agencies and partners because we're dealing with people that are doing things that they shouldn't be doing. They are creating, they're creating crime in our community. I have firsthand knowledge of how the Flock system works in our community, and I have seen it work to actually prevent crime. The one thing that I can say is that when we have had situations where we've had people create and commit crimes on our property, and we report them to the police department, the police department reacts very quickly, and they act with all responsibility. They have never, I've never given a reason to discredit or to question how the police department responds. I have seen people arrested because of the Flock system that have created or committed, not created, committed crimes within the mall. With that, those people are doing something that they shouldn't be doing. If you're following the law and you're not violating the law, you should not be concerned about the Flock system. The Flock system is tracking those that are doing things against the law. They are not tracking the people that are five minutes late for work, which I've heard, that they are tracking people's movements. I challenge those people to actually get involved with our police department, find out what our police department does for us on a daily basis. The calls that they get and the reaction time that they have is very minimal, and when they get a chance to react a little bit quicker to prevent something like a child that's missing. I had a friend whose child was missing, missing for three days. As a parent, that's concerning. With the Flock system, they were actually able to track the child's license plate. He was a teen, just began driving. They tracked the license plate. They were able to find him. It took three days, but that child is home safe with his parents. That would not have happened without something like Flock. So please, do not do away with Flock. Keep it protecting our community and our citizens of the community. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Sean Parson and then Michael Oliver.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett and City Council. I'm here to talk and call for you to cancel the contract with Flock. I want to start by highlighting that local police and a lot of the focus has been on our trust or relationship with the local PD. And while there is a space for discussion and debate over our trust with a local PD, I don't think that's a real issue. The issue is not about our local trust, but the trust we have with both the federal government and with Silicon Valley as a concept as a whole. Flock has, against agreements that local PD have had in place, already broken rules that have given information to ICE. This has happened in at least four states, Washington, Oregon, Virginia, and Massachusetts. All these local police departments felt that they had also protected their local communities, and Flock lied to them and sent that data against those local wishes to ICE agencies. I have no idea why our local PD thinks that they are going to be able to hold back when other local police departments with equal amounts of capacity, money, power, interest, et cetera, have failed to do so in other localities. This is not about do we trust them, it is do we trust that Flock will respect anything that they will even relate to us? And I do not believe they will. Flock has, as people have mentioned, been used and have given information to help people find out who is seeking abortion services. They have partnered with companies like Ring, who also have detailed contracts with ICE. And this is all happening at a time in which we are seeing an increasing expansion of federal power and takeover of local police. In the last year, the US federal government has nationalized multiple states' National Guards and sent National Guard troops into occupy local cities against the wishes of both governors and local officials. Why are we working to build a system of surveillance that will allow them to have further access to control, monitor, and see us? If they can take control over cities like Chicago, Washington DC, Portland, et cetera, Flagstaff will not have the capacity to push back nearly to the same level. So I'm asking you, not do you trust the local PD, again, that could be a conversation we have at another time, but do you trust the federal government? And do you trust Silicon Valley tech entrepreneurs to protect you and your community's privacy and freedoms? If you support this, I think you are stating you are supportive of those federal institutions and Silicon Valley's current kind of mentality and approach to privacy and to kind of surveillance security. And I strongly oppose that, and I'm calling on you to also oppose it, to protect Flagstaff from federal overreach and from Silicon Valley. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Michael Oliver and then Lydia Nelson.
I apologize for having to stand down for my official duties. I promise you, I assure you that my platform here today is not that of an employee or supervisor for the Flagstaff Police Department. Mayor, Flagstaff City Council, city leadership, and community members of Flagstaff, thank you for allowing me to address you at this very important juncture. My name is Michael Oliver. I'm the President of the Flagstaff Law Enforcement Association. I represent the 108 sworn members of this police union, who include officers, detectives, corporals, and sergeants. In general, my duties include advocating for livable compensation, officer wellness, and better working conditions for the members. Every day, our officers put their lives on the line to protect this community. We want to use every tool available to do the job smarter, safer, and more efficiently. And Flock cameras have proven to be one of those tools. We've already seen rare results. In cities across the country, departments using Flock cameras have reduced car thefts, caught violent offenders, and recovered missing children in record time. And here in Flagstaff, we've seen how they can give officers a critical lead within minutes instead of days. When time matters most, during an Amber Alert, a hit-and-run, or an armed robbery, that speed can mean the difference between catching a suspect and another victim getting hurt. Our detectives, who are the best in the business, work tirelessly, following leads, interviewing witnesses, and piecing together evidence to bring justice to victims. But the truth is, time is our greatest enemy. The longer it takes to find the crucial clue, the harder it becomes to close a case. Flock cameras help bridge that gap. For officers, Flock cameras also improve safety. When we know what vehicle we're approaching and why, we can prepare, call for backup if needed, and de-escalate more effectively. This isn't just about solving crimes, it's about preventing tragedy. Now, as a union, we also care deeply about public trust. We support clear, transparent policies for how this data is used and stored. The cameras should not, should serve one purpose only, public safety. With those safeguards, when those safeguards are in place, these systems earn community confidence, and they deliver undeniable results. So Flagstaff City Council, technology like this helps us work smarter, not harder. It protects our residents, it protects our officers, and it helps build a safer, stronger city for everyone. I urge you to continue investing in Flock cameras, because they are not just cameras, they are one more way to keep the city of Flagstaff safe. Thank you for your time and your continued support.
Thank you. Lydia Nelson and then Joseph Smith.
Hello, Mayor and Council members. My name's Lydia Nelson, and this is my seventh year living in Flagstaff. And while this isn't my first time attending a city council meeting, this is my first time speaking at one, and I hope that speaks to the importance of this topic for many. While many of the opinions that I have have been stated by others tonight, the point that I want to stress is that the distrust in this system lies within Flock surveillance and the privately stored data. While I do trust that Flagstaff PD has the best intentions in using this information to protect the community and appreciate the transparency that they have demonstrated in reaction to community concern, I do not believe we can trust that Flock is doing, what Flock is doing with this information. I understand that once Flagstaff PD hears of the misuse of this data, it will be turned off, but I don't think it should have to come to that. It could be days, weeks, or months before an audit is run, and then the misuse of data by Flock is discovered for Flagstaff PD to turn them off. The misuse of this data and sharing the information, sorry, with wrong individuals can have serious repercussions for our community. I do not believe that we can trust Flock, and I do not believe that Flock has a place in the Flagstaff community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joseph Smith and then Kevin White.
I'd like to thank the Council for hearing me, and I'd like to thank the police department for doing all they do. I just, I feel like there's a lot of misunderstanding of the information that has gone through. I didn't really prepare anything, I'm kind of winging it, but I wrote down some things that I kind of have questions about. The police, when they were up here, they spent like 30 minutes speaking about how nobody has access to this information without requesting it, and then immediately after was like, oh yeah, and there's 50 organizations that have full access to it. I would, I would love to hear a response to that, and like, it feels a little, what's the word, like, not deceptive, but like, it feels like, like, how could you spend 30 minutes talking about how you're not sharing the information, then say, oh yeah, 50 organizations, full access, they can give it to anyone they want, no problems. Another thing, on the PowerPoint, it said that they only view license plate readers, I believe that was stated by the chief, the, or they only read the license plates. Flock, it's very public information. Flock takes a fingerprint of the, of the car that you're searching for, or whatever car passes by and it scans. Similar to how he was describing the Plant app, it scans the whole car, creates a fingerprint on that car, and then using that, you can search like, oh, red car, red Honda, but like, and, and when, when you asked to clarify that, they didn't, they didn't explain that at that. They specifically said that it only reads license plates, which is, I could be wrong, I don't know if there's any local restrictions to that, but nationally, that's how the Flock cameras work. They don't just take pictures of license plates, they take a scan of the whole car, basically. Every time you pass, it adds that information. I know a lot of people have said that it's mostly hypothetical situations, but we've heard at least three people, I think, maybe two, from our community who have experienced false allegations or being pulled over or detained for being, the AI system just thought they were someone else, you know? And it's not a hypothetical situation. We've had literally two people come up and share their personal experiences with that. And then I wanted to say, I support the, I support private companies putting them in their parking lots, there's no problem with that. I mean, I think the redoing the contract is a great idea and having those fines for misuse. And I just wanted to say, there's a website called Dflock.me, a full map of where the cameras are for anyone interested, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next, we have Kevin White and then Aubrey Harris.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for hosting this conversation. My name is Kevin White. I was born and raised in Flagstaff, lived here most of my life, and glad to be here. A couple of years ago, some of you might remember, there is a, one of those companies that you send your DNA to, to, to learn about, to learn about your genetic heritage called 23andMe. They had a privacy policy that stated that there, that people who send in genetic, genetic information to them, that their, that that information would never be shared with basically anybody else. A couple of years ago, the 23andMe came under new management, they've just decided that that was never, that was no longer going to apply, and there, and all the data that they gathered from people for that entire time is available for, they're selling it now. The assurances regarding the privacy commitments of the company Flock, I respect the good faith of our, of our police department. They cannot make promises about the, what Flock does with, with that data because Flock isn't accountable to them. Flock is accountable to, to their business owners. And even if, even if they're doing the right, even if they're respecting that privacy now, there's no guarantees that they will in the future because they're not accountable to I, I think that we're also underestimating the importance of the number of false positives that Flock is reported, that Flock cameras are reported to be receiving. If Flock, if data from Flock cameras is used as, is used as evidence in court, it's virtual, it will be virtually a guarantee that people who are, that people who are innocent will be convicted on the back of that data, which I think is something that we should be very careful about. In general, I don't think it's good civic, I've heard it said many times, it's not good civic hygiene to put infrastructure into place that could be used in the, that could be used in the future to, to repress the, to repress the population, to surveil the We have a chance to, we have a chance to not do that right now, and we have a chance to, to do the right thing by, to do the right thing by our population, to do the right thing for the safety of our city, to get rid of these cameras that have already been demonstrated to be abused in many, many ways. Thank you all.
Thank you. Aubrey Harris and then Casey Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. So I think that Flock is capitalizing on our fear of what could happen. If Flock was actually trying to prevent crimes in our community, it'd have a big sign saying, hey, this is a Flock camera, we're collecting data on you, and this is going to be used for police investigation. But instead, it's capitalizing on the, it's capitalizing on the crimes that are already happening to collect information on citizens who are just doing their daily tasks. They don't need a picture of everybody's vehicle, they just need, like, important cameras in private businesses. And also, since Flock is using AI, one, AI is built with the internal biases of its creators, so the biases of the coders of that AI will eventually be brought out in the process. out in the program. And then also, AI, it has such an exponential opportunity for growth and change. There is no telling how this information could be used by those AI systems in the future. They will use the fingerprint of the vehicles to put together a searchable database of, of everything that they take images of, but also, it's not just going to be a little cropped in image of a license plate, it's going to be a full image of the area. All that data in that image can be utilized by AI, whether there's a person walking on the side of the street, their biometric data of their face could be used in the AI system for something. So, I'm just saying, in the future, this data, right now, might not seem that dangerous, but it becomes so much more dangerous as we give it more influence in our society and more access to our personal lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey Gonzalez and then Deborah Block.
Mayor and council, Casey Gonzalez, most of you know me. President of United Flagstaff Firefighters, the local union of the fire agencies that serve around Flagstaff. Couple other things I'll hit on, speaking with the perspective of running the day-to-day up in the dispatch center, full-time firefighter, long, lifelong resident of Flagstaff. And a couple other quick things with it, going back and forth up there in my mind of what to hit on, and finding it interesting that as I walk to the podium and have one, two, three, four, five cameras in the back, all watching what's going on, and putting down both phones that I have to carry that have cameras on them, and the, can't even tell you how many cameras that exist in here, as well as all the ones when you walk out of the building. And we're speaking of one that is surveilling license plates for a purpose of tracking movement. Every device we carry gives up our privacy today. Every app that I sign into, everything we do on a day-to-day basis shares that information. You can go to places and find what I buy, when I buy it, how I buy it, get reminders on it, all of it, and have cameras to access all of it. And I think what's really being talked about here is we support the police department in everything we're doing for the name of safety in the community. And that's really what this offers, is the ability for police to do very specific policing in very certain instances. And to not speak on a political stance with this, some very specific instances within working, when SWAT is serving warrants, also a paramedic in assisting the SWAT in serving warrants against violent criminals, and reducing that policing footprint in communities of being able to be very specific about what's being targeted, going to a house to serve a warrant on a recent operation where the individual should have been there based on CI information, criminal inform, or informant information on that individual being there. They weren't there. We knew the vehicle, we knew the license plate, we could have driven around looking for hours, having multiple vehicles run around. We didn't need to, because they went back and looked at flock and realized he had left town the night before. We didn't need to go take that around the community. So we sit at a point where we're looking at, how much are we willing to be surveilled? Because everything we do in our daily lives gives that, our privacy up, period. It's just a fact, we can speak to the Twenty-seven Amendments that exist in the Constitution. We give up our rights to privacy every day with every app, every phone, everywhere I go, every store I buy at. What can we do to keep people in the community safe, keep them efficiently safe, and support an understaffed police department trying to do it within a growing city and a very diverse and increasingly diverse population? So, that's my only, neither support or against, but do your research.
Thank you. Deborah Block, Braden Macias.
Good evening, council and mayor. I rarely come here unscripted, because I'm a bit of a hothead, and so I like to contain myself when possible, but I am, I am profoundly undone by the direction of our country. And I think it is impossible to look at most things that affect communities isolated from the greater community. And I do not disparage the, or question the integrity or intention of Flag PD, but as a previous commenter noted, I do not think that is the question. I am a retired federal employee. I have been through a number of furloughs, I have been through a riff, I have never seen the degree of unlawfulness that is occurring in our country, within our government, as is happening now. We cannot look at anything without taking that into account. It is not hyperbolic to say that we are in a crisis of democracy. I am sixty-seven years old. What I see happening, for anyone who is paying attention, we should be terrified. And yes, we are surveilled. I turn location services off on my phone. Does it do a lot? I don't know, but the direction we are headed in is, is horrific. And I don't think you can look at this independent of that. You truly have to look at, you know, our first, people being jailed for exercising First Amendment rights, people being, you know, detained because they have a critical, you know, Snapchat chat or Twitter, or whatever they are, I don't even use social media, on their phones. We can't look at anything aside from that. It is a treacherous time, and I really, really just ask you to consider that when you're looking at this, because it is so much bigger than Flag PD. Thank you.
Thank you. Braden Macias and Phoenix Schaefer.
Hi, you guys. I come, my name is Braden Macias, I've lived here all my life. I just had a couple of questions about the flock cameras. I wanted to know, how many in town do we have?
Thirty-two.
That was covered in the presentation.
I just wanted to re-clarify, I just wasn't here. I would like one of you guys to answer.
You're here to give testimony to us, so we would like to hear your, your perspective on the cameras and on the contract and on the petition.
Okay, so can I not ask how many there are? Thank you. Perfect. I wanted to know, I wanted to say that we should, I want to know who is, according to the Dflock website, there are thirty-six cameras in Flagstaff. Four of them are pointed at Home Depot parking lot on the west side, I believe. There's none on the east side. I would like to bring awareness as to maybe we should start looking into why, if they're not owned, as Officer, I believe Oliver said, they're not owned by Flagstaff, which I get, Home Depot is private property, but at the end of the day, if it's in the same system, same city, could it not, could Home Depot have less restrictions? Also, I just talked to the manager of Home Depot, apparently they were not installed by Home Depot. I'd have to talk to corporate, I'm getting more information. But I do think that it brings awareness to, we are allowing a separate entity to have the same surveillance system that we are so against in this same system? Does that not allow, does Home Depot allow to give ICE that same access? And if so, what's stopping them from giving it? You know, what's, what's stopping ICE from coming into, into this from Home Depot? Even though I don't think, I don't think the flock should be allowed in Flagstaff as a whole, let alone a private property, where a majority of their customers are Mexican or a minority? I think it, I think it deserves to bring awareness to the people, not necessarily just to you guys. That is all.
Okay, thank you. Phoenix Schaefer and Gail Jackson.
Is it this one? Okay. Good evening, council, my name is Phoenix. I moved to the city of Flagstaff recently to attend NAU. I was so excited, everything here is so beautiful and walkable, it's super awesome. What I didn't know about, and what I could not have anticipated, are the flock cameras. They're non-consensual. It hasn't been made clear around town or on the city's website. Trust me, I checked. This evening, I asked the council why we as a city are trusting machine learning. AI of any kind is not in a place developmentally to be trusted by the government. How accurate is this machine learning? Has it made mistakes about the license plates? Is it any more accurate than human eyes? Because if it isn't any more accurate, why are we using AI? Are these programs being monitored by humans? Because if not, and the program starts to mess up, what does that mean for us as citizens? If you do know the answers to these questions, I urge you to share them with us. Because I've seen no statement from the city or from flock itself thus far. Machine learning, for those who might be unfamiliar, are AI models, like video suggestions on Netflix and YouTube, as well as fraud or spam detection in an email inbox. Though I hear you, and I understand this AI may be more advanced than my YouTube search page, it's still just a pattern-trained AI nonetheless. Machine learning is simply patterns-based. Sure, the pattern is license plates and cars, but it's possible for highly-trained AI to make mistakes. I do not think it's ethical for Flagstaff as a city to use AI to keep its people safe. I did not have an opportunity to consent when I first moved here, but I have an opportunity now, and I'm telling you that I don't think this is a safe, ethical, or viable choice for the city of Flagstaff. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Jackson and then Everett Bonerant.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Gail Jackson, I'm the president and CEO of Econa, and we do regional economic development. Tonight, I am here to talk to you about surveillance. It's already a part of our daily lives, we see it in economic development every single day. It's in phone apps, credit card transactions, doorbell cameras, public transit, drones, you name it, it's the way the world's going. The difference with, the difference with that and flock cameras is that they serve a purpose of public safely, safety that directly benefits everyone in our community. These cameras have helped law enforcement solve crime, recover stolen vehicles, and prevent potential threats. They are inexpensive, efficient, and data-driven tools that contribute to making our city safer. A safe community isn't just important for residents, it's essential for economic development. Businesses want to locate and invest and grow in places where employees and their customers feel secure. If we want to retain and attract employers, safety has to remain a top priority. Flagstaff proudly brands itself as the city of innovation. Removing proven technology that enhances safety and operational efficiency doesn't feel innovative, it feels like we're going backwards. Right now, there's a nationwide shortage of police officers, while we continue to promote law enforcement as a vital rewarding career. Through our workforce development efforts, it's important to remember that this technology is not meant to replace officers, it's meant to support them, and I hope that we will continue to do that. Please keep the flock cameras in place, let's continue using smart, data-driven, informed tools that protect our businesses, residents, and visitors, and strengthens our city's reputation as both safe and forward-thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Everett Bonerant and then Leonardo F.
Hello, city and council. I am Everett Bonerant, I have grown up in the city my entire life, and I've seen it change a lot, and I've heard a lot of different testimonies tonight. I've heard a lot of different business owners and cops say one thing, and I've heard a lot of different citizens say another. And so I look to what history has told us. We've had different companies repeatedly sell our data, we've had different advertisers repeatedly sell our data, we've had different federal agencies already use this data, which means whether our cops say it's transparent or not, it is not that simple. Whether business owners say it works or not, it is not that simple. It seems for a fact that this data is going to be misused, so the question is not, do we need Flagstaff to be safer, but is it worth the cost of it being misused? Do we need to betray our community in a way that causes them to not feel safe, so that we attract employers? Do we need to make it easier for our cops to target different people when we don't necessarily know if it's even effective? Do we need to make sure that these resources are available for when the time comes when ICE wants to use them? When the people around us who do want to target the people in our city want to? Because the question isn't, is it going to be used tomorrow to do work bad? It's, is it could be used bad in a year? Is it could be used bad in three years? When these cameras have been implemented and forgotten about who is going to abuse them? When these audits have grown tired, tired and ineffective, who is going to keep checking just as effectively? Or are we just going to hope that this works well? We've heard, already heard citizens say that this doesn't work well, in multiple different cities and in multiple different places in the state, which means we already know it is not necessarily going to work the way we want. It won't necessarily solve crime, it won't necessarily solve anything. We have many cameras that do these things. We have cameras that find license plates, we have cameras that watch cars, which means we have these extra cameras to watch us extra, so that they can see extra. We don't necessarily know what they're looking for, they're, say they're going to use it to watch license plates and cars, when we know it can detect faces. We know it sees the street, we know that it sees all of it. Why, how, and why can we believe that a company that does not care about Flagstaff is going to protect us? How can we believe that a company that has effectively proven that doesn't care about local communities, is nationwide and ineffective, is going to actually help Flagstaff? Or is it just going to be another way to make this Flagstaff more of a city like Portland that's in chaos? Is there another way to just make this ineffective and chaotic, so that we spread discourse between Flagstaff? Because we're a peaceful community. Sure, we have crime, but we don't stab each other in the back, and this is furthering our way towards that from outsiders.
Thank you. Leonardo F. and then Molly Joyce.
Good evening, city council, Mayor Daggett. My name is Leandro Funes. I've been a resident of Flagstaff for the last six years. Unlike a lot of my peers, I don't have anything prepared for you, because you've already heard the statistics from both sides and personal testimonies. We've heard a lot about promises and the importance of trust. Despite any personal feelings I might have on police officers as a man of color, I have full faith that the men here of Flagstaff Police Department are fully invested in the safety of the community. But crucially missing from these conversations, I've noticed, is the, the cores of trust, and that's benevolence and kindness. And I believe that the flock cameras are driving a wedge between the community and the police department, as we've seen in testimony today. I believe that benevolence and kindness are the way forward, and I believe that the only way to do that is to have faith in our officers and communicate with them on a personal level. I do not think that these cameras are helping us. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Molly Joyce and then Ira Allen.
Hello, city council, Madam Mayor. I'm familiar with many of you, as my position on the Open Spaces Commission has brought me here a couple of times. As a person born and raised here, I am concerned about the influence of this technology in our community. It's like no one ever read Nineteen Eighty-Four or History. I feel that this kind of surveillance, once installed, endangers vulnerable individuals, or has the potential to. This kind of technology is antithetical to our city's recently adopted regional plan and its commitment to sustainability and a commitment to an affordable and safe community. I'm against flock for all the same reasons prior speakers have cited, and for many of the reasons that its supporters have cited. Its CEO, Garrett Langley, has targeted Axon and Chinese-owned DJI, which are drone manufacturers, to eliminate crime in ten years via ground and airborne surveillance. That doesn't sound like freedom to me. This technology, no matter how well-positioned in an executive summary, does not guarantee safety to individuals, it guarantees control. Our data is not protected, our data is utilized. Do point to the violation of our privacy data rights by the Department of Government Efficiency during the first one-hundred-and-twenty days of our current administration. We already are subject to every aspect of data collection, per the gentleman from our fire department was so kind as to cite. So why is this additional surveillance necessary, other than to refine control? I echo the concerns. other than to refine control? I echo the concerns of trust, not in our police department, but in the people outside of our community, beyond our city, beyond our county and state, whose interests are in this company. Your focus should be in making Flagstaff a more prosperous community by lifting us up, not surveilling us. The cost of this technology and its contract is funding that could be used for purposes that actually ensure our safety as a community. For example, removing the restriction on the number of paramedics our fire department can employ at any given time, a restriction solely based on budget, which limits the quality of emergency care citizens can expect to receive when an EMT or a fire department is deployed to their situation. It also limits the upward mobility of the men and women on our fire department who hope to make enough money to buy a house in Flagstaff, per our city's regional plan and what we say we care about. So I challenge you, I demand that you, as a city council, put our community first. Eliminating crime isn't only attainable via surveillance, imprisonment, or prosecution. It comes from enabling your citizens to thrive via education, healthcare, and a roof over our heads. Thank you.
Thank you. Ira Allen and Chelsea Green.
Mayor Daggett, council members. I just came from mountain biking up in our beautiful open spaces. And one of the things we don't have up there is a bunch of cameras. And part of why we don't have a bunch of cameras up there is because we've locally followed the lead of the Forest Service, which does not allow people to install private cameras in the forest for game purposes. And part of why the Forest Service doesn't allow that is because it interferes with the freedom of movement of everyone through the forest if some people are benefiting from surveilling the forest for their own purposes. It's also to prevent poaching. Okay. I'm timing myself on my device that's surveilling me. I've chosen to allow my device to surveil me because I like what I get in return. We're today talking about a set of cameras and a surveillance system that was installed without any democratic process. In other words, without anything like a possibility for collective consent to the meaning of that surveillance. A lot of people have a lot of reasons that they object to it. I agree with most of those, but I'm actually just here today to talk about process. Ultimately, if there's some trade-off between privacy and security, between freedom and security, that trade-off has to be subject to a substantive democratic process. The meaning of that trade-off has to be determined collectively. But I can't be part of a collective determination of what trade-offs to make at the barrel of a gun. We are effectively today at the barrel of a technological gun. For us to talk about the trade-offs between privacy and security, when there is already installed a system that makes privacy impossible in substantive ways without having been installed, subject to democratic controls, is to fail ourselves today, you, us collectively, to be in the position of democracy. I don't think that the Flagstaff Police Department means ill or is pursuing anything but what they think will be best for policing. That's not the question. The question is, what process will enable us to collectively decide on what trade-offs between privacy and security we as a community value and find most appropriate and meaningful? Currently, such a process is not in place. There is no way to put such a process in place without first taking the gun out of everyone's faces by deflocking. Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea Green and then Joshua Booth.
Hi, I'm Chelsea Green. I've never actually spoken at the city hall before, but I've lived here for the last 25 years. I worked in the downtown area at one of the businesses that has one of those cameras. I was one of the people who was responsible for trying to interpret those cameras. I saw how many times that was difficult and really contentious. I ended up having to let a bouncer go because of some activity that he did that we had to call the police for. So, you know, I have some experience with some of the things that go on downtown and whatever. That said, I have a lot of concerns about this Flock system. As the fire chief said, we're all surveilled all the time. This doesn't make sense for us to have additionally, except for the fact that there's like an AI component. And that doesn't necessarily lead anybody to feel better about it unless you really do buy into this like AI future. But like, AI future is also related to data centers, and data centers are something that is really starting to become a new terrain on the environmental front. They are starting to pop up everywhere as being like something that really takes a lot of water and resources, energy, and is raising costs for citizens. And I think that that's something that needs to be considered as well. I think the consideration of like what happens when something goes wrong, because let's be real, something always goes wrong. The fact that we, as taxpayers, are going to have to pay for that is really, really distressing. And, yeah, so like, I just don't really see what, on top of all of the surveillance systems that we already have in place, this is actually doing for us. It is also a little concerning that like, nobody really heard about it until after it was already in place. I heard gentlemen say that it was on the agenda. I mean, I don't know, I didn't see any social media posts or anything that was like letting anybody in the community know about it being something that everybody would be surveilled. So despite it being on the agenda, it may not have, it may have behooved y'all to let us at least have some comment. So that's, that's something that I was concerned about as well. All right, I guess that's, I have 17 seconds left, so I'll let you have it back.
Thank you. Joshua Booth.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I truly believe that Chief Connolly and the FPD want a safe and prosperous Flagstaff, but this is so far beyond individual wishes. I want to speak to a systemic threat that I see against our immigrant community here in Flagstaff. At a prior city council meeting, there was a comment made by a Flock representative who spoke regarding federal agencies' abilities to enter into agreements with local agencies. This struck me and presented two paths forward in my mind. If city council denies the renewal of the contract, ICE will not be able to ask FPD to share their Flock data because it won't exist. However, if city council renews the contract, the day will come when ICE asks the local police department to share their data and state that if FPD does not, ICE will use this lack of cooperation to insert themselves further into our community and remove longstanding community members. This community can't afford to lose another member at the hands of ICE. We've lost too many. I've sat with their grieving mothers. And I, as I hope you're all aware, we even recently lost a cherished son, brother, nephew, friend from this earth who was in ICE custody in Florence when he was left to die. Flagstaff will not be able to turn off Flock when ICE asks, thinking this is an option Flagstaff will have is just willful negligence. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some online commenters?
Yes, Mayor, we do. Our first commenter is going to be Michelle. Michelle, you can go ahead and offer your comments now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Michelle Rucker, and I'm the Deputy Director of Northland Family Help Center. So we are a service provider for survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking here in the city. We work with local law enforcement and police to ensure safety and recovery of survivor cases. We've done so for nearly 50 years. The survivors that we serve every day say not fear, often a matter of life or death. Many of our victims are fleeing, trafficked, or perpetrated. Who can stop them? The ability of law enforcement to locate vehicles, defend them, or to quickly
Michelle, I am so sorry to interrupt you. Could you try turning off your camera and see if, because you're cutting in and out?
Oh, I see. Yep. Is that any better?
So far.
Okay. So as I was saying, the ability for law enforcement to locate vehicles associated with offenders, or to quickly identify a suspect or missing persons vehicle, can make an enormous difference in preventing further harm. ALPR technology, which has been used in our community to help locate perpetrators of domestic violence, sexual assault, and trafficking, who offend and harm people residing here in our community. This tool allows officers to act swiftly when every minute counts. For example, when an abuser violates the order of protection, or when a trafficker moves a victim across jurisdictions. We recognize the community may have valid concerns about privacy and data use. However, in our experience, FPD has shown professionalism and transparency in its use of this technology. Appropriate policies and oversight can and should remain in place to ensure responsible use. Thank you so much for your time in considering the perspectives of those who work every day to help survivors of crime rebuild their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Kevin McCoy. Kevin, if you would like to unmute and turn your camera on, you can offer your comments now.
All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Kevin McCoy. I am a lifelong resident of the city of Flagstaff, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak here today. I had the opportunity to speak on this matter several weeks back at another council meeting, and I wanted to return to follow up. I will not go into the details of all the reasons why I believe Flock is a mistake today for our community. Instead, I would rather focus on policies such as trust, oaths, and obligations to the public. If you are a member of the Flagstaff City Council, you were elected to that office by the people of Flagstaff under the trust and belief that you would represent us and do and act on behalf of the people of Flagstaff. In 2023, we experienced a situation where a measure was moved regarding the Flagstaff Medical Center forward against the will of the people of Flagstaff. When this action was done, the people spoke up, and when the people spoke up, they were mostly ignored. Once that measure went to a vote, the overwhelming majority of Flagstaff stood their ground and voted down the measure. Currently, today, on the city council, at least four members voted in favor of that Flagstaff Medical Center rezoning. I hope now, looking back in hindsight, two years later, that we learned a valuable lesson on following the will and desire of the people of Flagstaff. Regarding Flock, the people have spoken loud and clear. At every single community meeting we have held, the overwhelming majority have vocally stated that they do not want Flock in Flagstaff. I hope that we can learn from the mistakes of two years ago to listen to the people who voted you into office. And regarding the chief, I greatly appreciate the chief's dedication to serve the city of Flagstaff and doing in his best efforts what he believes to be the right move for the people. Chief, what I ask of you today is that you listen to the people, the people who are overwhelmingly telling you not to move forward with this project. The only people I have seen speaking in favor this evening, well, almost the only people, were police officers themselves. But the actual citizens of this town have been loud and clear. We do not want it. So chief and council members, please, 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 learn to represent the community and listen when they tell you what they want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next commenter is Griffin Franklin. Griffin, you can go ahead and unmute and offer your comments now.
Hello, my name's Griffin, and I'm a resident of Flagstaff. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. I see Flock and its ALPRs as a serious risk to our private and civil liberties. There's an important difference between phones and cameras and private properties in Flock, and that is, on some level, we can choose our engagement with these data collectors. Flock cameras do not provide citizens this discretion. These systems continuously record people's movements, often without a warrant, probable cause, or even reasonable suspicion. It's been made clear that our data and driving histories are rarely confined to the town or city where the cameras are installed. There is no guarantee that data from Flock will be kept secure because so far, it has not been. And these cameras are tracking everyone who enters the sphere of the ALPR, not only those labeled as criminals. Once the data is out of our community, we have no control over how it's used or what rules apply. This growing infrastructure has little regulation and won't stop with ALPRs as Flock rolls out new programs and partnerships. Supporting this kind of tracking infrastructure gives citizens no guarantees it will only be used against criminals. Data from ALPRs has led to wrongful arrests, profiling, and stalking by police officers, and Flagstaff cannot tolerate this kind of misuse. There is no substantial evidence that ALPRs prevent crimes despite Flock's unethical framing of information used to sell its products. We don't need this here for a better future for Flagstaff. The violence our police department is committed to preventing, to keep from happening to our citizens, needs to include the harm that comes from violations of privacy and false information that Flock has been incompetent at preventing. We have a fundamental disconnect in preventing harm if the people or companies who are supposed to keep you safe say you're safe, and you say you're not. The people of Flagstaff are saying they're not safe with the use of Flock because Flock is not accountable to us, and there are no mechanisms in place to hold Flock accountable to us. That's all I have to say today.
Thank you. Let's take the next online commenter.
Great. This is our last online commenter, Mayor. Emma, you can go ahead and unmute and offer your comments.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Emma Nesteruk, and I would like to echo the concerns my fellow community members have shared about the dangers that Flock cameras pose toward our immigrant communities. In this current political landscape, these cameras only serve to harm marginalized communities. If a person's license plate is scanned by a Flock camera, law enforcement will pay them a visit. And understandably, many people, especially people of color and immigrants, do not feel safe interacting with law enforcement. By keeping Flock cameras in Flagstaff, our community members will know that our city refuses to prioritize the lives and safeties of the minorities in our community and seeks to uphold security practices that have been proven to be ineffective and dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sarah Lee.
Hello, Mayor Daggett and council members. It's been a long time since I've spoken with you guys. I think the last time I talked at city hall was for the noise ordinance. My name is Sarah, and I'm the Peer Minister of the Lutheran and Episcopal Campus Ministry, and I'm incredibly proud to say that. I stand before you today to say that I do not support the use of Flock cameras in our town. I've had many interactions with Flagstaff Police Department in my lifetime, and I have a lot of respect for the officers who have kept me and my congregation safe. Just because I do not support the use of Flock cameras, that does not mean I lack support for the Flagstaff Police Department. However, I have read reports of the data being collected by these cameras, being used by ICE agents to arrest undocumented immigrants. As a Christian, I think it is the right of anyone in an unsafe situation to seek asylum. The Bible itself, in Proverbs 31, verses 8 through 9, states, "Speak out for those who cannot speak, for the rights of all the destitute. Speak out, judge righteously, defend the rights of the poor and the needy." If these cameras have the chance to put those most vulnerable at risk, the ones who cannot speak out and defend themselves, then I am strongly against them. It would be against all I stand for to say otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. So no more online, no more in-person. Okay, Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I have a couple of questions for you. So I did a tour yesterday just to understand the system and how we use it here and stuff. And one thing that I was surprised to be made aware of is that NAU, being a separate agency, entity, has been using Flock for years. And regardless of if we move forward or not, that does not impact the county, Navajo, or NAU. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Matthews, that's correct.
And so, and I just wanted to reconfirm, because I was trying to write down some repeated comments. When the data, after 30 days, and that may change, maybe When the data, after 30 days, and that may change, maybe shortened, but at 30 days, that data just, it's just like a camera in a store or at home and stuff. It just gets deleted or rewritten or?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Matthews, yes, that's correct. It's gone.
And yesterday, when I saw the example of Officer Hernandez's car after we drove through the cameras, I was a little confused on one of the commenters making a comment that a Flock camera could track rolling through a stop sign. And I'm, I'm confused on how that could happen. Is that, is that accurate, that that could be tracked as a traffic violation?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Matthews, that is inaccurate. It, it doesn't have that ability. And I'm not aware of any red light running cameras we have in the City of Flagstaff at this time.
And I, I also heard several comments about, and, and I guess it does, the Flock camera system can help reduce crime by deterrence if a criminal knows, or somebody wanting to commit a crime knows that they're there. But really, the focus that I understand from law enforcement is more so in the solving of the crimes and the speed. You know, we've gone from no technology 20 years ago to now, just, you know, years after years of technology to where we can solve crimes much quicker. Is that a correct assessment to say that the Flock camera's main priority is solving the crimes, not always necessarily preventing?
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Matthews, if I could also just elaborate on this a little bit more. I think there's two things that we need to understand in our craft of providing safety and strategically trying to impact crime. There's solving crime and preventing crime. And so, you're right. This tool is predominantly used to solve crime. And I hear a lot of discussions about crime reduction. I have a passion for it. I probably live it too much in my mind at times. So, to be clear on that, yes, this is a tool to solve crime. We're not accessing this data until a crime has occurred. I want to be very clear on that. The other conversation related to, hey, is this tool reducing crime? Upon my arrival here, we had a 50% increase in Part I violent crimes, that, those are those violent crimes tracked by the FBI. And as we sit here today, I've been here a little more than 12 months, we're at a 12% reduction from that 50% increase. Now, I'm not going to sit here and say that it's a result of this tool in, in its monolithic use. There are many, many contributing, and none of us in this room should give one causation to crime reduction. There are many causations when we look at crime prevention through environmental design, working with social service providers to impact social determinants of health, behavioral health, addiction, alternatives to incarceration, deflection programs. There's many things that come together. But I will say, since we've had this going as one of many pieces in our crime reduction plan, we're sitting on a 12% reduction in violent crime today.
And lastly, because I know it's getting late. I, in the last 12 months, how many crimes has the Flock technology cameras assisted in solving?
Yeah, we took a dive into, Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Matthews, we took a dive into that. And when we looked, you know, as we are embarking upon a new records management system, and I want to thank council for that, for this current one is antiquated and not conducive to modern data demands of community. And so, but as we took a dive into that manually, we located 260, or 271 incidents where victims were serviced in the past 12 months utilizing the Flock system.
So, the, the system does work when handled appropriately, and, and I understand, I've heard it, I've thought it myself, you know, there's a risk always with, especially new technology. And I do appreciate the, the levels of controls that you've put on this. You know, it's hard, you know, we have to recognize what's happened in the past and then make changes and put guardrails up to prevent it from happening in the future. I know there's been some really heinous crimes that have been solved through, we can't speak of them right now, but solved through the Flock cameras. And one thing that I, I feel that is important is to remember the victims and victims' families and stuff. So, I appreciate your work on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start by thanking everyone that's come out to speak with us tonight. I think these are really important conversations that we're having, and certainly not an easy conversation by any means. We've heard from both sides of this topic in so many ways, and so many important questions have been raised by many of you tonight. Many important questions have been raised over the time that we've been engaging in these conversations. And a lot of thought has been put into our police department's engagement and willingness to engage and participate in these conversations, are moving this petition forward to enable this conversation tonight, and the conversations that will certainly continue beyond whatever conversation we have now. I want to start by saying that I agree with so many tonight who have said that this is not a, a question of our trust in our local police department. My faith in our team does not make this conversation any easier because I believe that our police department is coming at this from a place of wanting to serve our community, wanting to provide for community safety and the needs of our community, and wanting to do the right thing and, and meet the needs of our community. What troubles me, or what I find most challenging in this conversation, is the fact that technology is advancing so fast, and we are in a constant race to keep up. I don't want to be in a position where we are trying to align with technologies rather than ensuring that the technologies that we use align with us, our community, our values, and our needs. I believe that those needs extend to all of our community, including our team here, the service providers that exist within our community, and the Flagstaff Police Department. I want us to be able to focus on our local needs, our local community, and our local safety. And I agree that the role that we fill is to guide local policies and protect and enhance the quality of life for our community. But we're also a community within a state, within a nation, within a broader conversation. And I think that that larger, broader narrative is much of what's guiding us tonight. I don't know the direction that, that the rest of council will give tonight. My gut, my feeling is that we are in a, a place and in a position where we can press pause to ensure that we are doing this in the best way if we continue with Flock, that we are doing so in a way that hears the voices of our community, that continues to bring forward the concerns that we all share, and that makes sure that our system is set up in a way that is doing it right, that's protecting our community, that is not becoming a surveillance state, that is not facing the same risks that other communities have faced in using this sort of technology. I am deeply impacted by the narratives of, of people within our community who have experienced what can happen when this technology makes a mistake. And I think that that is the fairest way to, to put it. Technology in itself is not flawless. It is not without the opportunities for mistakes to be made. A community member shared with me earlier today the story of a, a person out of, I believe, Denver, who had the police respond to her home directly, accuse her of theft, say that they had her on camera, and that there was no use in her lying about it. She had to then use her own porch camera and the cameras around the places that she was visiting to prove that she was not the person that they were looking for. And it created a deep sense of fear and victimization for her to have to weigh that line between, I had to rely on the same technology to prove my innocence, but I also became victim of the same technology that made me a victim to begin with. That is why I say this is not an easy conversation. It's not a black and white issue. I have seen so many pieces of evidence on both sides. I also read about the NAACP out of, I believe, Oakland, California, that wrote a ringing endorsement of Flock because of the reduction in crime for a predominantly black and Hispanic community. All of that is to say, and, and I want to wrap up quickly and get to the point. I believe that if we move forward with this, we have to do so in a way that we are not catching up to the potentials of what could go wrong, but we are setting as many standards in place that make sure that those are not the issues that our community faces. If we are willing to press pause, then I encourage us to do so. If not, then I say we need to get as many of those measures in place before we move forward with our contract to ensure that our community is in the best position to make sure that if something goes wrong, we stop the system. If it goes right and it continues to reduce the cases of property theft, of victimization of members of our unsheltered community, reduce kidnapping and human trafficking, and all of the things that we want to see reduced across our community, then we're do, doing so in a way that is truly protecting and serving our community and the greater good. So, that is my perspective and, and direction, I guess, on all of this conversation. I know that there are more questions that will be asked by the rest of council, but that's basically just where I'm at right now. So, thank you again to the community that came out and shared all of your perspectives with us today.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and I too want to echo the appreciation for everyone being here tonight, the emails, the conversations, staff, chief, I've talked with you a few times on this. And I have a couple of questions and then maybe a comment at the end. I was able to see the Flock system in person. Thank you again for showing it to me. And I'm hearing the concern that it captures the person inside the car. When I saw it in person, I did not, did not see that, and I think I viewed three or four different photos. Can you talk a little bit more on that concern and what the Flock camera actually does capture?
Mayor, members of council, Vice Mayor Sweet, thank you, and I do appreciate you taking the time to engage richly in, in the experience. I have never seen in the hundreds and hundreds of still photos of the rear of a, a vehicle and a license plate any picture of a person or anybody in or occupying that car. That's not my experience. And if you were to ask some of our most seasoned investigators in the hundreds and hundreds of images they've looked at investigatively, I've never, never seen, seen a picture of, of a person i- in the car. And to clarify, that is that snapshot in that moment of time when it is in the pan view of, of the camera, where the license plate and the rear of the vehicle is, is, is taken in a photograph, and that is it. And, and, and as we reiterate, that if we sense that vehicle has been used in a crime, then that is when the officer is accessing motor vehicle information based on our reasonable suspicion that that vehicle's been used in a crime and only in that situation.
Thank you for clarifying. Another question, I believe it was Joseph that asked about the 50 municipalities that we share with. And I've had a hard time following from point A to point Z on this. So, can you talk a little bit about who we are and the partners with in the 50, and how does it work getting the information?
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, Vice Mayor, I, I do appreciate that, and, and I think this is a really important part of the conversation. And so, let's just start with the journey. So, if there's a crime in another municipality, and that officer has entered his identification, he's put in the reason for why he's accessing the system, and that he then sees that, and we've done this with other cities for victims in, in our community, that the suspect is now in another community, and he sees that we, we have had that plate captured, that initiates the conversation with the system and then with us as investigators. So, that, as simple as I can paint that, we have that relationship for them to be able to. But I want to continue to remind people that people aren't just randomly getting into this system. Those checks and balances, that multi-factor authentication and the verification, and then our own audits are, are constantly assessing that. I also want to be clear, if there is an agency that I identify that is working in collaboration for immigration-only purposes, we will shut that access down to them as this is our data. Flock does not have access to our data once that photo is, is captured. There's no back entry. It's encrypted. And so, if I hear of that, we have not experienced that, Vice Mayor, as it relates to that. And I'm open for conversation. We have this in a chief's forum statewide, and there is a symmetry. If, if there is an agency on that list that is identified, I want to have a conversation about its removal.
Again, I'm going to ask one more question, and then I can follow up. So, as I sit here tonight, I'm thinking about, you know, the room was full, and I, I deeply appreciate that it was. But I also have to think about those that are not here. Who's not in the room? What victims are not here? Who's forgotten? Who's left behind? Chief, you and I have talked a little bit about how, how this can look in the future, and we, you had brought up a possible six-month review period. And I'm wondering, from your perspective, what that can do. And I guess it's not that I want to punt this, but I think there's a lot of things that we're still working on, like the trans, the transparency portal, an overarching privacy policy, a citizen advisory team. There's a lot of information that maybe we still need to get out in the correct way, the facts. And I came in here tonight. I've met you several times, and I still have questions. So, I think, you know, as we're working on all of that, I'm wondering, from your perspective, what that six-month review period would, would do for us as a community, for you as our police chief? Because I would only move forward if we could have this tackled and, and seriously come back and, and look at the success of this program.
Mayor, council members, Vice Mayor Sweet, I appreciate that. And I, I think that six-month check-in, and I would say that this is something we build into our process where there is a biannual or even a quarterly report to you all as it relates to this moving forward. I do believe we're very close. And so, when we look at this process and this system, from systems of accountability to prevent, prevent intrusion that we don't want, or deception, and then to utilize it minute by minute right now for victims, I think we have that security in place to continue to audit and have conversation and move forward. These other conversations that have the entire city related to pri- privacy policy, these other conversations about engaging in a, in an advisory, I think we can build all that rapidly between now and the six-month time, while still with our current policy, with the structure and the rules that have been put in place, and the accountability with our audits, and our policy and our procedure, and the assurances that we're receiving related to City IT's perspective on system security, that we can move this journey along. And the reason I say that, you know, as I looked back at some cold cases in this community that prior to these systems were not solved, I, I want to be able to continue servicing victims of crime, providing support to these other entities in our community that are supporting these victims. these victims. And I think we can do that simultaneously in a rapid manner while holding ourselves accountable to that six-month conversation.
Thank you. That's all for now. Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Chief Conley. I appreciate that you've spoken up in the public forum at Market of Dreams that if you were made aware of any inadvertent or intentional sharing of our LPR data with ICE or Homeland Security, that you would shut the system down. I respect that that is your stated intent, but my question is, how quickly could you shut it down? The contract that we have with Flock through the TEMPE agreement says 30 days that either agents, the company or the city, could stop the contract with 30 days' advance notice. But can you really shut the system down like that if that is your determination?
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Spence, and I'm glad you touched on this. I think this is incredibly important. I can look over to Colin right now as administrator, I can turn it off right now. And then that contract, the system's often not doing what it's intended to do. And then we have a month-to-month with Flock where we could have a conversation about feeling deceived or something happened that wasn't part of our agreement and we would be done with the relationship. The other thing I want to say too, when we look at the timeliness of this data and its investigative importance, no matter who you are, and I've really tried to spend some time intellectually with this conversation about how this would be operationalized successfully and rapidly from one of the federal administrations we have concerns about or those. And I come to some conclusions that I could see that in a delayed manner on some things, but this in what is already accessible to them, to be completely honest, Councilmember, from data, this is probably the least valuable and time-sensitive for them to operate it. And that might be why at times Flagstaff and a lot of the agencies in the state have not had this issue. But I want to be clear, I can turn this off right now if I believe there's been a misuse of it that rises to the level of us terminating it and then the contract would expire and they would take their cameras down.
Thank you for that clarification. I respect your knowledge and pledge to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it was Vice Mayor that said this, and I forgot to highlight it too, and I think it's worth repeating. All the cameras are set to take pictures of the back of a vehicle, so there's none that are facing the oncoming traffic to even accidentally capture who's in the vehicle. Is that correct?
Mayor, Council Members, and Councilmember Matthews, that's correct.
One thing that you said at your last presentation, and you know, also just mirroring off what Vice Mayor said about making sure that we, you know, highlighting or considering the people that maybe aren't being represented or being able to speak. We've had a lot of emails lately that are coming in now in support, but you made a comment the last time about people verbally telling you in support, but they were fearful of retaliation from people who may disagree with their point of view. Is that correct?
Mayor, Members of Council, and Councilmember Matthews, yeah, I have had a lot of conversation with community members and there is, and objectively as I look at this, there is a sentiment in portions of our community that are fearful about commenting on this. I'm not going to opine onto their own personal reasons, but that hasn't been voiced to me multiple times. I think the other part of this conversation is tied to some of this fear that we're all feeling in some of our most vulnerable communities. And I, Councilmember House, I do appreciate you mentioning the NAACP support. I've taken great pride over the years, whether it was Reverend Tillman or others, in working collaboratively. And my experience in my other city was that my, our communities, our immigrant communities and our most vulnerable communities actually demanded this through their council members in support of what was going on from a crime perspective. So it was a unique perspective. And we see disproportionality. At times, that's not a direct result of race or bias, it's a direct result of location of crime and victimization and suspectology. And so, but to your point, that has been voiced to me by numerous community members.
And lastly, the conversation I had with some of your officers yesterday when we were reviewing the technology, I asked them about, to clarify the concerns that many people in our community have about this technology being used, you know, with ICE. And my understanding from that conversation was, again, it doesn't track who is in the car. And if there was someone undocumented in the United States, that would not be entered into the system unless they've committed a crime that then is being tracked. So it really has nothing to do with citizenship. It's if they have, if they're being searched because a crime has been committed regardless if they are a documented or a citizen or whatever, that's the only time it would come up on a scan and flag. Is that correct?
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember, that is correct. And I think as you've heard from Flock and others, that there is not that relationship. And I am not aware of any instance of a federal immigration agency entering something into our system or having the ability to do that. I think I also want to make sure is very clear, and you know, as we worked with Keep Flagstaff together under the mayor's leadership to recraft our immigration policy that was making it more thoughtful and I think intelligent on a lot of levels, Colin and a lot of the members that have been here around me a lot longer, you know, there hasn't been ICE immigration operations in this community. There is SB 1070, I think when you heard a certain community member mention somebody in ICE that was arrested for a crime and then that notification happens through the sheriff office. And so I think that needs to be considered as we have, there's no staffing assigned up here, there's no planned operations. And so it's part of the decision-making metrics for us as we move forward together.
I appreciate that. And I also want to just thank everybody for showing up tonight. You know, we welcome community comment, that's how we hear from our community, both online through emails, in person. So I just want to thank everyone for showing up and sharing their thoughts and their concerns. You know, a lot of them are, you know, legitimate. You know, we have hacking in major systems all the time. We hear about air traffic control or other major nationwide systems. I think those are something that we have to acknowledge is a risk that could happen. But does that, my question to myself is, is that enough to stop and take away a tool that's very effective in solving crimes for those fears of what if it got hacked? What if some, you know, what if there was one-site, cited event where something was abused? That can happen on any system, whether it's technology or not. And, you know, it's, this is a tough decision because it's a very sensitive decision. It's very helpful that we have been using this for over a year, that NEU has had it for multiple years, and we have not had an incident, so we can look back on history instead of the what-if on something very unknown. So, you know, that helps hopefully all of us make a decision on weighing the risks to the benefits. So, and always, you know, thinking of the victims and if something happened to one of my family members, I would want the fastest technology to solve that, that crime for sure. So thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank the public again for coming into these rooms. This could be nice to share your experiences of a lot of new faces out there. I started too by coming into these rooms because I was concerned about the way things were going on way, way back in the day. So the point is, I'd love to see you guys here. We're pretty much here every Tuesday, like 3:00, meeting for all night. And it's really important that you're here so that way we can hear your voice. I wrote down 44 public comments, so... Is my microphone not on?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So I wrote down 44 or 45 public comments from you all. So you have been heard and a lot, I pretty much came with a blank slate today mainly because I wanted to get the public's input, hear more from the chief, and come at this freehanded. Now, my, so thank you for coming, thank you for the public engagement. If it was this way every week, this person would be a happy man because, you know, if it's not for what y'all are giving to us for to consider from different perspectives, we don't live on your block, we don't hang out on your street, you know, we don't know what's going on in your world. But y'all coming down here helps me understand some of the commonalities that we share and also some of the differences that we share, and it enlightens and brightens my commentary. So thank the public first and foremost for this process because this is your process, but only when you can engage in it. And that's what we're doing here today. And I expect all of you to be here every Tuesday at 3:00. I'm joking. Mayor, I wanted to ask if I could ask Brandon a question.
Yes, and I'm sorry, Greg.
Thank you, I'm so sorry to interrupt the flow of the discussion. Had one comment come in online saying that they lost audio. I was wondering if we can check from somebody online to see if the audio is okay before we proceed.
Mic check, mic check.
I think we're getting that it's fine. Okay.
Thank you. Again, I apologize.
And yes, you absolutely can.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I wanted to bring down the person that brought this to us, Mr., I'm going to get your name wrong, I'm going to call you Mr. Traxel. Okay, Mr. Traxel, I'm inviting you down here, probably not to talk about what you want to talk about, but I'm inviting you down here to, if you would please entertain the question and answer it, feel free to. I'm really not inviting you down here to compile more onto your three minutes that you had earlier or talk outside of my questions, to be very frank. But if, because you don't want this to continue, you want Flock to be gone.
That's correct.
And that's not what my questioning is about. But I trust in your wisdom to bring this forward, the change that you've affected in the community and the fact that you brought it into our eyes. So with respecting that wisdom, what three things would you curtail the current system to make it better if we were to keep it? If you can't answer that, you're welcome to sit back down.
If council decided not to do what I would ask, prefer, of course. By far, the data retention policy, 30 days, way too much, needs to be as low as humanly possible. I definitely appreciate Flagstaff PD removing ourselves voluntarily from the national LPR database, and I think we could do so, so, so much more. As we know, with the one-on-one data sharing agreements that we have with 50 agencies, they enter their information on a request and they instantly get the last scan. And we know from my comment, and if you look online, that the most common search reason is the word investigation. And I trust that Flagstaff PD doesn't do that in their searches. I don't have a way to check currently, but again, these are other agencies without commitment to our community. Third, to answer your question, I would say ideally just having no way to have our information be retained for long periods of time. As I shared with multiple members of this council, I believe that what I like to call traditional LPR systems that delete everything that is not actively on a hot list, I believe that is the ideal situation in regards to citizen privacy. Does that answer your questions, Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, and I appreciate you for deviating from what your will is here, and that is to eliminate the camera system. But I needed to dig a little bit deeper in that creative and bright and insightful mind that has spawned this conversation that is so impactful and important for our community. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
All right, well, like I stated earlier, I did write down all those comments and I have questions that are tied to them. So I apologize, but I'm not gonna, well, I guess I'm not apologizing because it's getting late, but like this is our job, this is what we do. So if we have to take some time to do this, then we have to take some time to do this. And I hope everybody's okay with that. But my first question is, what constitutes a hit on a hot list or what is a hot list? How do you get to a hot list, Chief?
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Garcia, you know, I think we've gone over this a few times. I'll let Colin walk you through when that officer responds to a crime, realizes that there has been a suspect potential vehicle, and then the process with which they get supervisor permission to enter what we believe is a suspect vehicle. If you want to walk them through that again, that would be great.
And you can be brief. I was just curious because you mentioned it in the slides, but I didn't hear context to it, and I also have a scenario.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Garcia. So a hot list, as you see on the dashboard, there's 2,000 of those in the community every 30 days. And that could be, say, if I was driving a vehicle that had a stolen plate, my vehicle was getting pictures taken of it, if I pass through 10 different cameras, that's actually going to be 10 of those images. So that's not 2,000 unique vehicles, that's just 10,000 photographs of hot list plates. So it could be a stolen vehicle, it could be a stolen plate, it could be a missing person, it could be a sexual offender, it could be someone involved in terrorism, or it could be a custom hot list, like the example I gave. It could be, you know, a vehicle that I'm looking for that was involved in burglaries or involved in a collision, and then I got supervisor approval and I put that in. So combined of all those things, there was 2,000 of those in 30 days that, you know, we're tasked to protect our community from.
Councilmember, I think the easiest way to look at it is, look at it as, it is a vehicle that we reasonably believe has been involved in as a crime vehicle, is associated with a victimization and a crime. And so it's put in this list that creates a notification and so we see that it's back in our community or heading towards another victim, we're able to track it.
And I think I heard from the commentary tonight that like that was one of the main concerns was like, you know, the picture of this vehicle and if like an officer can just like enter into the system investigation and kind of make up an investigation as they're going along because they think something's fishy. Don't have to go into too much detail, but what you're saying is an officer isn't going to, on the fly, try to make up an investigation on somebody that they see that they're, you know what I mean, that they just, they don't have any proof of anything of.
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Garcia, that's correct. And I have no experience with that, that scenario.
Thank you so much. So what we've heard a lot in the commentary today, and I'm certainly not going to mention names, but we heard that the tech can track your route, you know, and in some cases, they were concerned that it was going to be from like doorstep to doorstep. My understanding of the technology is that it takes a picture of the back of your car in different places in the city. So I went and I took my routes throughout my life and I noticed that, you know, where the camera would pick me up throughout the day, and none of those were at any of my doorsteps. Do you, can you speak to the intentionality of the placement of these devices and how they, or can they, you know, track you beyond the point in time from the exact spot where the camera is focused on solely?
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Garcia, you're correct, it's only tracking that moment in time. Now, can it snapshot you at one camera and then further down? But we have no understanding of where you're going, we have no understanding of who's driving, we have no understanding if you went somewhere else in between. It is simply that snapshot, Councilmember, and it's only being extracted if we believe your vehicle or that vehicle was involved in a crime.
Thank you so much for answering these questions so candidly and so succinctly. I would have been happy to give these to you prior to this, but we're, I'm getting them from the public, so we're here now. So there was also questions about false positives. Have you experienced false positives? And maybe we could take this one step further in, like, what are, how are we gonna do this? But, do you, can you even imagine of how a false positive would come to us? And the only reason I ask that is because we don't want to wait until it happens.
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Garcia, I am not experienced in our twelve months of a false positive. But I believe I have heard of a commentary around the state where there was a vehicle that the A was perceived as a B. But it was caught by the officer in the checks and balances of understanding that when they ran the plate, that didn't match the vehicle. So, there's still that human connection. And when we enter data into ACIC or NCIC currently, we still have that human element. And there can be typos. You know, it's not uncommon at times for a vehicle that's been stolen in Los Angeles to end up coming down the forty and somehow it's parked and our officer runs the plate. And there are times those vehicles, due to the humanness of data entry in big organizations, law enforcement, that those plates can get entered with an error. But I think the redundancy in the checks and balances within how we run in motor vehicle department, ACIC, NCIC, has captured those. But I don't have that experience here.
Thank you so much, Chief. So, this is coming off of a public comment as well. Lot of mention about, you know, ICE. And you've already made the commitment not to be sharing any of this data with any of federal agencies. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, the question, I guess, is, and maybe it's more of a concept or something that I'm kind of thinking through as we're here. And that is, like, anybody who registered their vehicle, you know, short of it being stolen or a stolen plate, is already in a database that you guys utilize, I'm assuming, correct?
Mayor, Members of Council, yes, absolutely.
So, in my mind, I would think that if, I mean, I don't know how to say this, but the data's already there on everybody's license plates. So, if anybody wanted to go to your house, I guess, for whatever reason, I don't know what I'm trying to ask here, but I wish I could have somebody help me walk through this one.
Councilmember, if I can try to help you, I think, you know, the conversation about how that data is acquired, you know, repeatedly. There has been case law related to the Fourth Amendment and the conversation about privacy of the outside of your vehicle on a public road with a government-issued license plate, that our ability to look at that is not an invasion of your privacy. So, when officers are patrolling in your communities and things catch their attention, they have the legal ability to run your license plate. And what comes back on that is a lot more information than when we simply get a photo of a license plate and the back of a car with no other information on it.
That's kind of the point I was trying to get at, was it seems like we have a lot more data than what we're concerned about with the photo of that data. So, here goes to the other point that I was trying to make during the Home Depot conversation with all the private Flock cameras and other cameras that we have all over our community. So, this is one of my concerns on the pro side of things. And that is, is that we have the county, not necessarily sure if they have Flock cameras out in the county yet. But if they do, which I'm hearing they do, then that, then the next layer is NAU. We found out tonight, they definitely have Flock cameras right there. And then we have all, so, those people are governmental agencies and institutions that are following stringent guidelines because the public is holding them accountable, much like we have been doing and plan to do even more if this passes. My concern is, is all the private companies that were mentioned here tonight so many times by the public that, who knows? You know, who knows what they're doing with their information? And it's none of our business, apparently, because it's private. And that's throughout the city. So, it basically puts the hands of those who have the most potential to really abuse this into the private sector where we have no control. And then the public is now asking us to take away our ability to use this to help, where we have lots of controls, where you've stated you want to put controls in to make this happen. And we're being asked to eliminate the part that's helpful to us for, for the parts that we can't have no control over in the private sector and, you know, throughout the rest of the city, which kind of makes us an island in the middle of all this, which, if we say no to this, will eliminate Flock in that area, which means we could see when an offender comes in, who knows? I'm not exactly sure how that would be reported to you. Maybe it wouldn't at all. Maybe the county would just know about it. Maybe NAU would just know about it. And then you would just have to live with the fact that we don't know that that vehicle is in our system or in our area until, you know, something bad happens. That's my concern with that. It's not a question. It's just something that definitely has come through. And I really wanted the public to think about that while we were talking because it's something that occurred to me this week while I was thinking about stuff. So, I think we're almost to the end here, Chief. Thank you for bearing with me. And thank you, Mayor, for entertaining me.
We have all night. Seriously, we will take as long as we need, so don't feel compelled to hurry.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Council. So, I don't know how candid you want to be about this. And I'm not asking you to be very candid about this. It's just a question. How detrimental is, would this, would losing this be for the department? And, like I said, you don't have to go into very much detail if you just want to tell me yes or no.
Mayor, Councilmembers, and Councilmember Garcia, I don't like leveraging fear as a method of decision-making, especially when we're trying to be logical and pragmatic on a whole host of levels. And I just, I try, we try to be data-driven and intelligence-led and wrap that around systems of accountability. I call us to, what I look at and what Colin and I, all of us look at over the past years, those two hundred and seventy-one victims and their family members, their social networks. When we look at the one-year-old that was kidnapped in Southern California that came through our system, as tragic as that initial incident, I don't have control over Southern California or what goes on in other places. But I was so proud. And I felt proud for our police department and our city to be able to tell that agency, "We got it. We got it." And so, I think that that's where I've been laying my head on the integrity of this. I think my concern in it was tied to Vice Mayor Sweet and Councilmember House. I think we have enough in place to hold me accountable and us accountable while we continue to build. I don't like talking about building an airplane while you're flying it. But I think we're there on some things. And we have a couple waypoints that we can agree upon to continue because, you know, the city manager and I sat in a family member's house of a murdered victim when I first got here, first couple days of my arrival here. And so, to be able to work with that family and be able to achieve that was powerful for me on a lot of levels. And I worry about not being able to do that. You know, we're gonna work our hardest absent this, if it's taken away, to be able to do that. And that's my promise to you. But I've just seen the incredible power of this in my thirty years. This has been one of the most impactful technologies that I've witnessed.
Thank you for that, Chief. So, I don't know where this one's gonna go, but let's go there. We talk about the rear of the vehicle and the license plate that it picks up. And a lot of people were worried about, like, bumper stickers and stuff like that. That's a car. There's other vehicles out there. I'm an avid motorcycle rider and I'm an avid bicycle rider. Basically, anything on wheels, I love to be a part of that and use as recreation. That's my hobbies. Today, I drove by a motorcyclist who had a Cookie Monster cover on his helmet. It looked legal, you know? You could still see the shade and stuff.
I've seen him.
I could see this Cookie Monster guy cruising down the road. And on the back, it looked like he had a Cookie Monster emblem on the back. And I was like, "Oh, wow, the Cookie Monster Club," you know? And that's where I, where all of a sudden it deviated from just the back of a car to thinking about other motorized transportations and identification beyond the license plate. So, when I was thinking about this, that's where I came up with the question, like, can you guys on the fly, like, work something out? Like, if you saw one guy in the Cookie Monster Club and next thing you saw two guys, you might think, "Well, what are these guys up to besides, you know, delivering cookies voluntarily to the homeless people or whatever they like to do in the Cookie Monster Bike Club?" And, you know, and can you speak to other forms of transportation and how the scene is utilized from that? Or is it still just down to the license plate and that's it?
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Garcia, I'll have to educate myself on the Cookie Monster Club. But I think I have seen him. I want to be very clear. We are, when we are in these uniforms on behalf of all of you, we are agnostic in our political views, our religious views. We have no, and I will take drastic action if I ever learn or am around anybody in this state nationally. I'm having a conversation at the National Center for Civil and Human Rights in Atlanta next month on protecting and promoting civil and human rights in policing. And if we hear as chiefs nationally that that action is being taken based on opinions of bumper stickers, symbols on the backs of cars, that is irrelevant on that. What could be relevant is if we go to a victim crime scene and witnesses are saying it's a gray Malibu and it did have a certain type of bumper sticker. And they articulate the, I don't care what it is. But then we're able to access the system and there is that same verbiage in that bumper sticker in addition to that plate? That's powerful. That's powerful evidence for us.
So, what you're saying is if you went to, for instance, you know, an event and you found out that the Cookie Monster came and ate all the cookies, then it would be relevant to, you know, if they explained him as, you know, the Cookie Monster bike helmet-wearing guy to look at the ALRP and maybe see?
If the Cookie Monster committed a crime and we had reason to follow our procedures and the law and putting that Cookie Monster into the system and we saw it, then that would be valuable.
That actually makes sense, as weird as that was. Thank you for entertaining that hypothetical. I didn't know how else to frame that question. So, I was hoping, I hope that that wasn't too demeaning because I made it fun.
No, I understand it.
Now, I'll close with this. I know you guys are thanking God at this moment that I'm finally closing. What Councilmember House spoke to tracks with me. If we have to put a pause on this to make it better, that's, I'm willing to do that at this moment. But, I don't want that to get in the way of the fact that I would like to look deeper into the police manual because of some of the words that I have questions about, like national security, how that relates to ICE enforcement and stuff like that. You know, as we evolve, I would love to look at the policy a little bit closer or maybe just have it explained to me in a way that I could understand it better or possibly have some input or some back and forth on that. Because I am content with the outcomes that have come from the product so far. But I just have all of those concerns of things bigger and that we haven't caught up to. Full disclosure, I reached out to some folks, not mentioning any names, that had issues with this in other states. And I couldn't get a clear picture, necessarily definitive, but my understanding was that there was some inconsistencies in understanding from the police department. Do I think that's happening here? No, I don't. But I also don't know if it's not. So, if we have to push pause in order to get to that place, I'm willing to. But, if that's not the will of the council, then I am excited, enthusiastic that you guys have taken such a community-facing approach to this and have sussed out, well, all the questions that I've heard. Plus, you've added some of your own to try to make this even a better policy for the community and a better asset for the department and something that's gonna help victims as we go through this. Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. I don't have any questions. I just have a couple follow-up remarks regarding my original comments at the beginning of September. I'll go ahead and go through those now. I'd like to begin, as I always try to do, by thanking the public for turning out. I think it's very important and valuable what you're doing. I hope you feel that your time is being used valuably and wisely tonight. You are participating in our great American experiment of democracy. And that is what is gonna keep this engine alive and healthy and motivated through a lot of dark times. So, a few weeks ago, I spoke at length about my concerns surrounding Flock and the larger forces shaping our sense of safety and trust. These are a lot of concerns that I heard echoed tonight as well. And I don't feel that I need to rehash every point tonight, but I do want to bring us back to the heart of my message. We can't rewrite state or federal law. When data is requested of us, we have to comply. That's not cynicism, it's reality. And it's the fundamental baseline of where my concerns began with the use of Flock in our city. We've built a local police department that I genuinely trust. They've internalized the values of respect and accountability that council has worked hard to uphold, and that hasn't changed. And it's something we should all be proud of. What has changed and what continues to change is the world around us. The political and technological climate has grown more hostile to private and due process, to privacy and due process than I've ever seen. We can't pretend those shifts don't affect us. The deputy chief mentioned etiquette between agencies in response to one of Councilmember Garcia's early questions. But I'm seeing examples of norms being twisted and ignored and broken all over our nation right now with very little pushback or checks and balances. And so, when we're told we don't have to share information if we don't want to, we have to ask, "How long will that remain true?" And I don't have a good answer to that question. And it's the single hangup that I have in all of this that is keeping my position the same as it was before. My recommendation against expanding this technology wasn't a vote against our police department. It was a vote for caution, for the imagination to see where these systems could lead if misused, and for the courage to say, "Not right now." I will repeat one thing from my comments last month. If minimally-trained ICE recruits weren't running around the country in masks picking up brown people because they're brown, then I'd be in a very different place regarding this conversation. Policing only works when people feel protected, not watched. And under the broader landscape changes, we have a responsibility to protect our community's trust as fiercely as we protect its safety. My recommendation in early September that we cancel the Flock contract has not changed. Now, I do want to end, though, by noting that even if our contract with Flock proceeds, how Flagstaff interacts with the system has undeniably been shaped by the public's influence. The engagement we're seeing is having an impact on the potential breadth and scope of how Flagstaff chooses to use this technology. I see this as a positive. And I hope the concerned community recognize how responsive our police department's culture is to community input, no matter what becomes of this conversation. I'll leave it there. I will just say more emphatically that I'm in favor of canceling the contract. And if we need to revisit that down the road, we can do it with a clean break that some of the public has talked about. I'm not interested in punting this conversation a second or third time. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, I have a couple of questions. And one actually came up because of your comments, Councilmember. When, can you walk us through, again, if you received a request? So, Councilmember Aslan said, "We can't say no to state or federal requests." And we have participating state law enforcement offices that we would share investigative information with. But our policy states we won't share anything with the federal government. And we've taken ourselves out of the...
National look.
Thank you. So, what do you say to that, to "We can't say no"?
Mayor, Members of Council, I believe I can't say no. Now, if there is some other avenue legally that that entity would want to try and spend the time and the money and the energy to access that, I can't speak to that. But it is our data. I think that's been made very, very clear. To access it, you... been made very, very clear. To access it, you have to have that law enforcement credential that, that is authenticated and then is put into the system and the reason. And if that reason doesn't involve somebody who's been a victim of crime, my answer is no. And then I, as I've told everybody, if for some reason, if there's been deception within what I've been told what IT has examined in the systems of accountability and security, then I, then I look over a column and we turn it off. And I tell Flock, come, come get your cameras.
Thank you. My next question is for IT. I understand that CJ is back on, and then we have Paul in the back. There was a comment that said, we can't make promises about what Flock does with our data. And I'm wondering if you have, if you can clarify for us how we, how we control our data, and, and what prevents Flock from sharing our data?
Mayor, council, my apologies. I don't have my camera on. I kind of stepped away, but my internet is pretty poor right now. Ultimately, a lot of this comes down to their policies and then the third-party validation of their policies. Typical with cloud providers is they provide a platform for us to store our data on. Then the best practices are that they would encrypt that data and that they provide in controls which prevent their own staff from being able to access that data without our permission. That's fairly typical and best practices for, for cloud providers. This is effectively what we've observed as their, you know, policy. We have talked to their security directors, and this is how they manage that data. And then again, their policies are being validated through audits and compliance with, you know, SOC 2 Type 2 and all, and all of those things. So is it theoretically possible that there is another avenue to get the data? I can't speak to the, you know, the theory behind that, but I do know in relation to best practices with these types of cloud providers with sensitive data, this is a common practice, and they have, through their policies and, and the validation, have shown that they really can't access our data. If our data and it's encrypted from them, they would, they would be required to go through us to get access to that data.
Thank you. And I know we've, we've all asked a lot of questions of, of you all, and, and you've taken those questions back to Flock, as I understand it. So with that measure in place, how, we've had several commenters saying that Flock has shared data without the licensee knowing that. So how does that happen if they don't have access to our data?
Thank you, Mayor, for the question. In regards to, I can't speak to every single instance, and I, from what I have seen in relation to some of the articles that state that, it appeared as if that agency was actually sharing data. So again, I don't have specific context to every single instance and every single thing, and I apologize. I was not here for some of the public comment. I was out to dinner, and it's my daughter's birthday today, but, so I can't give specific comments to specific articles. But if an agency had lax controls within their own agency and they were not checking on the logs, it's possible that something was shared within those agencies and they just weren't keeping close tabs on it. What I can say is, you know, the commitment from the police department is that we are doing that. We are keeping close tabs, looking at the, you know, the logs and ensuring that agencies are not accessing our data without us, without our knowledge. So that's really all I can speak to, because again, I don't have, I don't have specifics to the specific instances.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And along those lines, I'm thinking that I heard you at one point say that some entities had national sharing on and didn't realize it, didn't read the contract. Is, is that correct?
Mayor, I don't believe I said that directly from that perspective, but again, that kind of goes back to my previous comment where it does appear that some agencies weren't double-checking how closely their sharing agreements were. And as well as, you know, Flock has implemented a lot more transparency features to really help agencies and the public understand who we're sharing with as well.
Mayor, Mayor, maybe I can help you a little bit, if you don't mind, if that's possible. You know, I think when we start speaking to what were the contractual obligations and I heard terms of conditions come, that's exactly it. I don't think we know exactly what those relationships are, and I think we're having a lot of conversations. Is there any desire to maybe have, talk straight to Flock? I mean, we're asking a lot of our IT people and even me at times. I know Flock's here. I don't know if there's some questions that related to some of those that might want to be answered. It's, it's an option should anybody choose here to some of these other contractual relationships or information that's out and about related to that, that might be of value. Just wanted to propose that if that, if there's any appetite for that.
Sure. I would like to hear how, how it is that we read that data was shared previously and how our current agreement with Flock prevents data sharing.
Great. Hector Soliman Valdez, Director of Municipal Engagement. Thank you for the opportunity to answer the question. As far as the, your IT department, they did a great job answering that question. Flock itself does not, does not share any data with any of our customers. We don't have access to the data. We don't have the ability to share it on our own. In those instances, as was noted, customers share data sometimes by mistake or erroneously, but the system audit tools were what led both those agencies either to notice or the public. We encourage this type of public conversation. We've built in the safeguards for those specific reasons. But really, I think it's important for the public to know that in our contract to you and to every city that we serve, the data is owned by the customer. Flock does not monetize any of your data, and Flock does not have the ability to share any data for any department.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. We have a question and a comment from Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's not directed at you. Actually, it's back to the chief. We've talked about, but thank you so much. I appreciate you being here. So I've heard from the day as several councilmembers have talked about wanting to work on building more guardrails in and, and more protocol. But I've heard from you and, and going through the tour that you've done a lot of changes and stuff. So what do you think more could be done? Is there anything else? I mean, it looked pretty tight when I went to, you know, see how we pulled the data and learn about the system and how you can build those in and turn things off. So, and you've talked about, you've shown us a screen that shows that the outlooking portal is, is close to up and running already. You've, you've talked about having a checks and balance in three or six months with a community advisory council to give some outside input. What else do you think, if anything, the police department could do to bring comfort to, you know, some of the people that have questions and?
Yeah. Mayor, members of council, councilmember Matthews, and I know numerous, numerous have had this conversation. Let me, let me start with, and I think you heard it from Brandon and some community mayors, the national outlook gone. We then, I think the second thing I heard from him was the conversation about 30 days retention. You know, it spans anywhere from three days to three years across the country. When we looked at our data, that 20-day window investigatively was a waypoint for us that I'm willing to have a conversation about, as is taking it from 30 to 20 days, and then having an assessment at that six-month of, hey, how many victims did, did we not service because of it, or is it doing what we think? I think that's a good first checkpoint. The other things, there's still more room for growth, and I know councilmember House and I have had this conversation about some of the metrics with which we want to see in the transparency portal that are more public-facing, more of our audit, granular audit information, so people can really understand that. And I think in this first phased approach of getting the transparency portal out, a next phase is I want some more of those internal metrics, some more discussions about crime types and breakdowns, when and why data is accessed. So I think there's work that can be done there. I think the establishment in the two trains that are the overall privacy policy for, for the city, and then this very specific conversation, you know, having now working on our third police chief's advisory board and, and hearing from community, I think we could get that in place very soon to start having additional conversations. So I hope that answered your question.
It did. And then, so my other question is, and it's been asked, and I even asked it earlier, but it keeps coming up, and just trying to balance, you know, I know that there's some stories out there of just heinous crimes that we can't talk about right now. And so I, and I bring that up because I, I want to make sure that we're not forgetting about the victims here. And, and being able to stop, maybe repeat offenders on some of the most hideous crimes that have happened, and that we are on a corridor from the 17 and the 40, and a lot of our community are not aware of the criminality that comes through our city. You know, we look at our city and we say, well, we're pretty safe, you know, we're a pretty good community, but we are a corridor for a lot of crime. Sex trafficking, child trafficking, human trafficking, drug trafficking and stuff. But the technology, going back and just, I just feel like it's important to restate, reads a license plate, and that license plate number pops up with a warning if someone has input data that says this, this is a hot list, or this is a potential vehicle using a crime. There's a lot of concern within our community that, fearing that ICE would use it for immigration, but we don't know who's in the car, and if someone is not a legal citizen, I mean, reading the license plate doesn't pop up and say, that's John Smith. So someone who committed a crime, and is it a different car, it wouldn't pop up. The car is the only thing that pops up. So I'm, I'm lost in understanding how immigration would use that particular technology to maybe come and apprehend somebody in our community that they're looking for. Does that make sense?
Councilmember, it does.
So can you just restate like how the license plate, I mean, we have a lot of other technology that they could use, and they, you know, they, these government agencies can go and track people that they're looking for. But am I correct in assuming that the license plate in a vehicle itself, unless it's entered in because it's committed a crime, is not going to help them track down somebody?
Mayor, members of council, councilmember, there has to be additional investigative measures, whether those are done upstream in this knowledge that this vehicle's been involved in a crime, or it's post-incident. So there has to be that additional. The simple photo, it doesn't come with MVD and personal information. It is just the picture of the plate and the, and the back of the vehicle. There has to be additional investigative efforts by whoever's accessing the plate.
Thank you. I really appreciate all the time and all the community outreach that you've done, not just here tonight, but I was at the town hall at Sunnyside, and I think you guys have done a really good job of just being available to the community and answering questions. I wish more people would have attended those other meetings as well, and some of our colleagues going through the tour, because it really has helped connect those dots and fill those gaps that we had in just what we hear and then what we know to be correct and factual. So thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you again, everyone, for this conversation tonight. And I just wanted to clarify, councilmember Aslan said he didn't want to punt this, and I don't either. I guess what I was asking is if we have a check-in while we work on these other tools that we're trying to put in our toolbox, is that sufficient for council to feel like we can move forward knowing that we have all the guardrails that have been talked about, we can undo this at any time? The chief has done an amazing job on listening to the community and trying to tackle the concerns, and I don't think we've given it 100% of the, of the effort to see where we can land on this. Even if we do take this down, I believe these conversations really do need to keep happening. We need a privacy policy for our community. So even if we vote no tonight and this doesn't move forward, to councilmember Aslan's comment, this isn't the end. This will be coming back. Technology is here. We will be needing these policies in place. So I just wanted to send that out there.
All right. So I'll admit that this has been challenging for me. I've read your emails, and in my responses to your emails, I told you I've read all the emails, read the articles you've shared with us. I've done my own research, met with many of you, met with our police chief, deputy chief, our chief information officer, and I'm, I'm really trying to consider the issue from all perspectives and hope that time will show I made a good decision. The reason this issue is so difficult for me is that I trust our police chief, our deputy chiefs, and our chief information officers, and at the same time, I have concerns about Flock's conduct and am wary of them and their past practices. They've earned the public suspicion. I believe that the data captured by cameras under the proper policies and practices can be valuable for law enforcement and in helping to prosecute dangerous criminals. Most of us have never been crime victims, and I'm grateful for that. My family endured a tragedy, and many times throughout this discussion, I've thought about whether this type of technology would have helped bring some closure to our family faster. I think it would have, and I would have been grateful for that. But it's hard to separate this technology as a useful tool from the improper way it's been used elsewhere. I'm willing to continue this discussion and to allow staff some time to create a citizens' task force. In order to do this, I'd like to see the task force assembled, and if CJ's listening, I, I hope this doesn't ruin his daughter's birthday. I would like to see it assembled within the next month. I want to see our data retention time shortened to, in this, 14 days. And I want an update on our agenda in six months. I understand that even if we renew the contract, it includes a 30-day cancellation, and if needed, you'll shut off the cameras immediately. If there's a Flock data breach, or it's again discovered that Flock has misled a client, given a public apology and promises the problem's been fixed, I want to see our contract ended and the cameras turned off immediately. I appreciate that we've already stopped the national sharing and recognize the limits that that places on law enforcement, but I think it's crucial to establishing some trust with opponents of this technology. I also appreciate that our police, our policy states that we won't share data with federal agencies, and I trust you and for transparency request that you develop a method to confirm this regularly. I've always appreciated how much residents care about our community and how willing they are to speak out. I spent many years I spent many years on that side of the podium, giving public comment. And for some, it can be a very nerve-wracking experience to get up and speak. For others, it doesn't seem to make you nervous at all. I always strive to make this a place where you can feel safe to say whatever is on your mind, and I hope that we've done that tonight. We should value the tension our different perspectives bring and create, because ultimately that's what community is about. And I too very much appreciate you all being here. So I am, I'm in support of directing staff to put the renewal on an upcoming agenda. But I want to see all of these things in place pretty immediately, and I want us to keep talking about this and keep it in the public's eye and keep it, keep it in front of us as well. Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate your comments and your thinking and your logic and the thoughtful way you've put your position together. I hate to sort of come in after you to say a couple more things, but I know we still have to hear from a couple other people, too. So I just wanted to add something really fast to reinforce my thinking to you all. I just want to be very clear, I'm not at all concerned with the way the system has been working, and I'm very pleased with how our department has been reaching, reacting to the community to strengthen safeguards. My concern is with how all of this could break down in an instant with an executive order, for example. And I have many ideas for how state and federal interests could bully us or compel us to suddenly be more cooperative than we want to be. I don't want to voice those out loud. There's no reason to put ideas out there. But I've already been bullied by the state numerous times during my seven years on council, as have many of us. I'm not just saying that to the exclusion of anyone else. It's a common experience being on council in Flagstaff that we get bullied by the state legislature. If I'm thinking of other ways that other levels of government could threaten us or maltreat us, then you can bet there's plenty of room for creative brow-beating and intimidation out there. And that's really where the final line comes for me. It's not about the way things are working. It's not about the preparations that our thoughtful people are giving to all these matters. It's about how this could suddenly break down in an instant without any forewarning.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Just a quick comment on your statement, Mayor. I am supportive of the parameters you put up, especially with the 14 days. I forgot to put that in my statement, but I am in agreement with that.
All right. So we are, yes?
To apologize, but I wanted to piggyback off of Vice Mayor and say that I also am in supportive of how detailed you had about the information going back to us if that's what happens. But I also wanted to add one more to that, and that's, it seems to be like there's some vagueness around the Flock terms of agreement. And I think that we would need somebody to be kind of an expert at that, at the city level, in order to keep up with how those changes happen, or have a good enough relationship with Flock to them for them to send all of those changes to us as they happen. Just a point of my expectations if this moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're looking for direction to staff to either end the contract or move the contract forward to a future agenda, presumably for approval? Or some other direction that you would like to give?
Mayor, I really appreciate the structure that you communicated and the request. I feel comfortable with that, and I will support moving this forward to put on a regular agenda item.
All right. So that is three. We just need to hear from Councilmember Spence and Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I too favor putting it on a future agenda with careful attention to the wording of the contract, and I look forward to the advisory council being expedited as part of how we're going forward.
The community has my vote on this one. It'll be a no.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, so, and maybe I should have put a Q instead of a C, but can the police or deputy chief clarify, what is the status of the contract right now? My understanding is that it is canceled, or that it's not canceled, that it's terminated and would be looking for renewal, or not terminated either, expired, sorry, that it has expired, and we were looking at amending prior to renewal? Is that the status?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, council and Councilmember House. Yeah, I think, or, you want? I think expired would be the correct term, and they've been working with us as the community could hear, get more input, council could become more informed. So they've advised us that they're, you know, willing to keep the system on until a decision is made from council, either to renew the amendment to the contract, or if you guys vote to terminate the contract.
And if I could clarify, it's under the same terms and conditions that the contract originally was created with, that they're continuing to leave the system on until a decision comes from the council.
So with what you're proposing, or what has been put forward as the council recommendation, am I correct in understanding that we would be continuing under the expired contract until we have these further conversations about the amendments that we want to see and the policies that we want to put in place in some of those safeguardings?
Those can happen simultaneously as we move to have this on a future agenda, but the cameras would continue operating while we consider the contract at a future, on a future agenda. And, I mean, according to what I asked for from staff, we would see the safeguards that we've talked about. We'd encourage them to continue what they've already been doing and add some additional safeguards.
And if I can put just a finer point on that, just from a logistics standpoint, from the meeting we had previously on this, where the citizen petition first came to you to determine whether you wanted to have this discussion, and the renewal was on that agenda, to now, we've continued under the same terms and conditions of the contract, and that would continue again until it's brought back to you. So it's just the same terms and conditions of the contract that were originally entered.
And do we have, excuse me, do we have the option to, I guess my concern with that is that we're looking to advance this with the concerns that have been brought forth by the community, the safeguards and policies that we're looking to put in place. My concern is that until those happen, it's still operating under the policies that have been a concern. So that's where my holdup is in giving a thumbs up to the direction. Like I said in my initial comment, I am in favor of continuing the conversation. And coming back to that point, I am just personally challenged with the idea of continuing under the current policies that are, are part of the, I guess, concern.
And Chief, as I've understood from conversations, whatever we want included, the 14 days, anything that we've asked for, Flock doesn't have veto power over. And so the, the, the contract is, is the contract, and we need to, you know, that's what we'll be approving, but all of these things that we've asked for tonight aren't, don't run counter to the contract.
Mayor, members of council, correct. And may I throw something out in this interim time between when we meet again? You know, I think to continue to really focus and be centric with Flagstaff. I'm willing to have a conversation that when we leave here today, we take that to 14 days, and I stop state sharing, just to build additional comfort as we build out and socialize more and have understanding about the realities of it. The one conversation is, you know, NAU was the first police department to bring this to this community, and they've had it for two years, and they've got the approval to move forward. The campus is, and that population and their safety is incredibly important. Our relationship and our interwovenness with the sheriff's office, and I think you heard the sheriff, and our relationships that we pride ourselves on so much with the tribal nations. And so maybe that buys a little more comfort in this process to getting to some of the other metrics and getting the committee together. But I think that was some of the big things I heard, and when we've talked, I've heard some of those wrangling of the conversation. So the national outlook's gone. We won't share. I would ask if it's okay to share with NAU and work collaboratively with NAU and the sheriff, as a lot of times we're so intimate daily, we can hold ourselves accountable to that. I know where they stand on some things. So I just wanted to put that out to buy some more comfort as we continue to build out while still keeping for victims of crime in Flagstaff serviced, solely Flagstaff.
So just to, you're saying not share beyond NAU and Coconino County?
And the tribal nations.
And the tribal nations.
We can turn that, those other, the state, we can turn those other 50 off. We can go to 14 days, and then we can, we can have these conversations with the transparency portal. We can have the conversations with the committee. We can identify some of those things that are most important to you all and community as we move forward. Those have been the big-ticket items that I've heard in all my engagement and from you all.
I would support that if that was our direction to move this forward.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you for that, Chief. I would, I would hope that you would be doing the turning off for a test in order to collect more data to understand how beneficial, you know, having that statewide thing would be, and not just as a, you know, or even a way to give us a glimpse of what limited access from the state is, you know, as a metric by design, so you could say, this is what, how it was before, this is how it is now. I would hope that that would be the main focus of having this halt, is just to experiment with the options that we have while we're kind of in this simmering process, to see what works best for our community. And I also want to thank you very much for coming up with that on the fly. That was awesome.
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Garcia, I think there's just as much to learn for all of us in turning these off and what we lose as there is in what we will gain with our comfortability with privacy and how we, how we move forward. You know, I have tremendous concerns at times about the national share, especially when we see the increase in political violence, no matter what party you're in, and that ability for it to move across state lines rapidly. And so I think, yes, the answer is yes. We will learn a lot from both sides of this.
So Councilmember Garcia, does that alter your position?
On this particular item, I am going to stick with the community that I've heard from the most, and that is no.
Okay. All right. So you have direction. Oh, Councilmember Aslan.
Thanks. I'll just be really clear. I continue to be, my recommendation would be that we cancel the contract, although I do want to add that I'm encouraged by the direction of the conversation that's being had and where the spirit of council is unanimously on this. And I, I reserve the right to be constructively engaged in the process as we move forward with the existence of Flock and making it the most palatable version that we can get for our community.
All right. Does staff feel comfortable that they have direction? All right. Moving on to open call to the public, this is for any item that is not on tonight's agenda, and I don't see any cards. Informational items too from mayor, council, and city manager, future agenda item requests. Councilmember Spence.
As the council liaison to the Open Space Commission, I am pleased to report that the commission, Open Space Commission, has selected a name for the Observatory Mesa Natural Preserve. So this has been a subject of many hours of discussion. Their guiding principle is to have continuity and comparability to our natural areas, and their selection of this new name is something we all need to internalize, the Observatory Mesa Natural Preserve.
Thank you. Councilmember House?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember Garcia?
I'll be very brief. I wanted to invite the public out to Market of Dreams tomorrow, October 29th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, to engage with the community development block grant process. It's a public meeting that's going to be speaking to, to how we get that funding and how that funding is used for people in the community, and maybe even could answer some specific questions to those community members who are currently unhoused. I'm sure that they could help you, point you in the right direction. And also at Cutts Barber Shop on the next night, which is, I guess, the 30th, Thursday, there'll be a trunk-or-treat for the kiddos. I think it starts around 5:00. Rev Up Unity, local nonprofit, will be passing out pizza from Domino's Pizza, and the motorcycle community will be there in full force to deliver candy, dress up as your favorite characters, and kind of step outside of the norms to interact with your inner child and the person that you're not 364 days out of the year on that one day at Cutts Barber Shop this Thursday at 5:00. Come on out for trunk-or-treat. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews? All right. NAH is holding two open houses. One is tomorrow on their campus. They have an auditorium from noon to 1:00, and then on October 30th, from 6:00 to 7:00. And there is also a community health fair on Friday at the Murdoch Center, and that is from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And there will be vaccinations, screenings, blood pressure checks, youth dental screenings, health education, food and drinks, face painting and whatnot at the Murdoch Community Center. Our Fix-It Clinic that the Sustainability Division does is on Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Montoya Center, and you need to make an appointment. So if you have something that needs to be fixed, make an appointment and go have it fixed for free. Don't throw it out. And city manager?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
It's the last time I'm going to say that.
And the last time I'll be responding to it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Oh. Here I was thinking that we're all done, and then there's this whole other part at the end. Okay, so we're adjourned.
the end. Okay, so, we're adjourned. And then I'm calling to order the special meeting. And we don't need to do roll call again. And council needs to confirm direction on 2.2 and 2.3. And that's it. Oh, yes, that's it. Just 2.2 and 2.3.
Correct, Mayor. And my suggestion is that the recommended action be prefaced with, I move to, or I make a motion to, and then just read that. That's the simplest way forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Spence?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to direct and authorize the city attorney to proceed as discussed in executive session regarding Desert Mountain Energy litigation up to and including...
Actually, if I might, we need to do 2.2 first. We're on 2.2. That's 2.3 if I, sorry for the interruption.
No, that's okay. I bypassed 2.2 because I did not think we were ready for a motion, but I'll defer to somebody that understands better.
Is there someone who would like to make a motion on 2.2?
My, I think I might be where Council Spence is, or Councilmember Spence is, just because of the third bullet? Was that a continued conversation? So, should we exclude that from this motion?
It is, it is, but we will need direction on the first two bullets under 2.2. My apologies for that. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you very much. So, I, Mayor, will move to direct and authorize the city attorney and/or designated city representatives to proceed as discussed in executive session regarding condemnation litigation updates and legal advice, discussion, and consultation regarding pending and potential litigation.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. 2.3. Councilmember Spence?
Thank you for the opportunity to try again. I move that we direct and authorize the city attorney to proceed as discussed in executive session regarding Desert Mountain Energy litigation up to and including potentially refiling or amending claims against Desert Mountain Energy and defend any related new counterclaims.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Great job tonight, everyone. We're adjourned.